Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Algonquin Regional School Committee Open Meeting of February fifteenth, two, two, twenty twenty-three, and we'll call it the meeting to order at six thirty-two. So first item on our agenda is public comment. It's an opportunity for members of the community to comment on any of the topics that we, we have on our agenda, and I see much people in the audience, so I'd welcome anyone to make a public comment, and when you do so, please just identify yourself, where you live, and we generally like to keep the comments to about three minutes. We were provided, the committee was provided some of the public's comments ahead of time in email communication, too.
Hello, school committee members. My name is Jennifer Drowan, and I live in Southborough, Massachusetts. I would like for you to all to, tonight, to please consider funding for the summer program for ARHS and CAP students on IEPs. Many of us were told at the September NSPAC meeting that was livestreamed that summer program would be cut to three days a week. The reasoning given by the Student Support Administration at that time is, it is what surrounding towns were doing. As you can imagine, that response did not sit well with parents and caregivers, and, as you know, it is the law that you actually can't change a person's IEP without establishing a team meeting in which a caregiver is present. We are not sure, many of you are aware, that there is a severe crisis going on in Massachusetts for young people, both under and over twenty-two, who require care as a response to not having the skills needed to be independent and live on their own or with their families. Currently, there are three thousand people over the age of twenty-two in Massachusetts that do not have the care that they need. Those twenty-two-year-olds and older are currently living in their parents' homes without support or employment. We have a community-based program here at ARHS for eighteen- to twenty-two-year-olds, which we believe is not staffed to provide the adequate coaching for life skills and vocational skills that adults require to be successful. Taking away another day for their program, three versus four days, will be detrimental in their ability to meet their goals. This program should be a five-day-a-week program. This is the time that we should be focusing on their pre-vocational community and transition planning. For many, it is their gateway, gateway to adulthood. It is the education they need to become successful, productive, independent community members. There would be a line a mile long, full of concerned parents, if any mainstream Algonquin classes were changed to three days a week. Parents would be outraged, and this would never pass. We would encourage all of you to visit the CAP program. This would be an opportunity for you to develop an up-close appreciation for what it means to live with significant developmental difference. By gaining insight into what the program provides firsthand, you could see what it takes to run a program successfully and fully staffed. Talking to the teachers to find out what they need is essential, as they are the driving force to make the program successful. Providing adequate funding will make a difference in their future to any CAP student. The time is not only to celebrate them once they graduate, the time is to respect their needs now. Reducing the days without individual data to support such a reduction is discriminatory, not only because there is no data collected to support this on an individual basis, which is IEP law, but reducing school days is only being done to IEP, students on IEPs. Transition-age programming and CAP is not an elective. At one time, it was considered year-round programming, recommended by the medical community for intellectual disabilities, those of our most in-need students. Over the years, the administration has shaved off hours, and now days. It is not the right thing to do, and you have the responsibility to approve a budget that will be robust programming, as you do for all your students. We believe that we are better than this as a community, and what not, and should not do what surrounding towns do as a reason for changing anything in an IEP. We are empowering you to be curious about this proposal and to reach out to your constituents, as they would be happy to share with you their grave concerns. We know if families can put great effort into fighting for a sports complex, they can also be committed to fighting for the programming to help students become independent, productive individuals, which lead to more meaningful life. We do that for our college-bound students and our vocational-bound students, and it is important to give the transition-age students and CAP students the same respect and dignity. We are requesting that you do not cut the budgetings for student support summer program, and not cut the days or hours. It will be more expensive to pay teachers and to become adequately staffed. However, the preparation will ensure that kids are given an education that not only prevents regression, but prepares them for life. Isn't that the goal for all of our students? And this is signed by myself, my husband John Drowan, Christine and Bill Cobb, Maggie and Rob Snow, Irene Scordi and Rick Bell, Bello, Olga P., and Sergey Johanna and Mark O'Connor, and Lynn and Dan Cooperstein. And I thank you very much for letting me read this tonight.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the community? Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Johanna Shaner. I'm from Southborough, Massachusetts, and thank you for having me tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Johanna Shaner, and I'm a parent of a seventh and fourth grader in the Southborough Public School District. I am also a board member and vice president of the NSPAC, our district CPAC. I wanted to speak briefly this evening to give an accounting and set some context relative to discussions that NSPAC has had over the past five months with Student Support Services relative to the reduction of services for the ESY summer, summer program. NSPAC was first informed of the potential reduction of ESY services in September of two thousand twenty-two, where the suggestion of reducing the current four-day ESY programs down to three days was floated as a topic of discussion for an upcoming NSPAC and district meeting. This topic was discussed at the first NSPAC general meeting of the year, where concern about the CAP in any CC ESY programs were voiced by parents at the meeting. And it was stated by Student Support Services that NECC and CAP programs were not a priority to shorten, as staffing for these programs is different, and Student Support Services would be considering these programs separately from the academic pragmatic programs. While this was not communicated as a final decision in any way, it was insinuated by the statement that the CAP program would not be changed. We now know that this is not the case. However, I believe that the NECC ESY program does remain as a four-day program versus the CAP, which has been reduced down to a three-day program. In the October meeting between NSPAC and Student Support Services, we had a discussion with Student Support Services where we voiced our concerns on the reduction of services from a four-day program to a three-day program for all ESY programs that were being considered for this reduction of service. At that time, it was stated that our district had a Cadillac of ESY programs versus other surrounding districts, and that the Student Support Services felt that more district staff would be willing to work the ESY programs with the hopes that this would reduce the ramp-up time for providing ESY services and improve the overall quality of summer support for this body of students. NSPAC voiced concerns about being able to provide required service when one less day per week, and how working parents would find coverage for their children for the five or seven weeks on Mondays that were being cut out. Our NSPAC school committee liaisons from regional and Southborough were on this call with us. NSPAC has received numerous concerns from across the district on the reduction of services and the impact to their children's ability to maintain academic progress over the summer with a shortened program. In meetings since the October meeting, NSPAC brought these community concerns to Student Support Services and has strongly recommended a strong plan of communication to the community on the reasons behind the reduction of ESY services. Student Support Services has ensured us that a lot of careful and thoughtful input went into the district decision, and NSPAC has requested that this justification be shared with the parent community. As we know, these decisions are based on very careful consideration. We feel the facts and data looked at to make this decision should be shared out, given the concern by so many families. A few items were agreed to. Number one, Student Support Services, Services would post a FAQ regarding the impact of the reduction of services to families, along with some benefits they feel district families would reap from having more district staff on board for the summer. And then number two, Student Support Services would provide a list of ESY programs this reduction impacted. To date, we have not received either document or email. To maintain transparency to the school committees on this impactful change, this topic was part of NSPAC's monthly school committee newsletter. We wanted to ensure that the school committee was aware of these changes. Lastly, given that one of the main justifications for this reduction of service was the onboarding of more district staffing for the ESY program, we have requested an ESY staffing and hiring update to understand if these new ESY hours are proving to pull in more district staffing as anticipated. I look forward to post ESY summer survey, survey results to understand what the impact of the reduction of ESY services had relative to parent feedback and support, as well as maintenance of student progress on a reduced schedule. This will surely be one of the priority topics for early next school year. NSPAC supports the notion that the CAP ESY program reduction should be reviewed before summer twenty twenty-three. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Johanna. Is there anyone else from the public? There is another chance at the end. All right, thank you. First item, action item this, this evening is action on open minute meetings of January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, and I think Paul had some suggestions on edits, which were provided, which I don't have.
They were really good, too.
There were two, two emails recommending edits to the minutes. So first from Mr. Paul Desmond, Cheryl has made those edits to the minutes. And secondly, Mr. Shanzar did make a request. His name was spelled incorrectly, so that that has been updated as well. So those, those updates have been made to the minutes. However, those updates are not included in your packet at this time.
I can speak to them, or we can wait till next month. I mean, either way.
We can speak to them and then maybe vote as edited, like we do audits.
Yeah, the first one was in the section about the, the vote we've made on the graduation requirements. It never said what exactly the recommendation was, so I just spelled that out. And there was another one that had me as a chairperson of the Athletic Building Committee. It's actually me and David Roman are the co-chairs, and they had the name of the committee wrong, so we just corrected that.
So we can have a, a vote to accept those as edited?
I make a motion to accept the open meeting minutes, accept and release the open meeting minutes of January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, with the edits as stated.
Chris made a motion.
Second.
Second, Kathleen. All in favor. Unanimous, okay. And then we need to vote on the executive session minutes, and that would be to retain. Questions like that? Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll move that we approve and retain the executive session minutes of January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Motion, Paul. Second.
Second.
Chris, all in favor. That passes unanimously. Next is educational policy, which we have none at this time, and that brings us to new business and three items there.
Sure. So under new business legislative update, so two updates that I'd like to share. First, the MAS C is advocating for two policy areas. First is really around circuit breaker reimbursement, seventy-five percent to ninety percent, which, again, would have a significant impact, positive impact on our financial condition moving forward in FY twenty-four. As you all know, the Governor Healy has not released her, her budget at this point in time. We were hoping to get state aid numbers prior to this evening, the, the recommended budget presentation. The good news is there's still time to advocate, and we advocate strongly for increased circuit breaker reimbursement. The second is that Healy, the Healy administration did move forward a two-hundred-and-sixty-million-dollar supplemental bill for fiscal year twenty-three. Of that sixty million dollars is earmarked for finishing the, the year out in terms of offering students free meals. So the amount they allocated actually only will fund up through March, and if the supplemental budget bill does not pass, then free meals for students would end in March. If the supplemental budget passes, that will be extended through the remainder of this academic year. And there's also legislative advocacy around funding universal meals for fiscal year twenty-four, both at the federal and state level, and we continue to advocate on that behalf. Keith has reached out to Project Bread, is trying to gain some letters that we can submit on behalf of the committee to ensure that universal free meals continues for next year. And those are the two legislative updates at this time.
Next. Next, we have a presentation. Oh, sorry, I couldn't see you, sorry.
So she technically has another month, right, to give her budget?
Yes, so the end of February is when her budget is due. She did indicate that she was hoping to release state aid numbers for education sooner. However, we've not seen those numbers at this point in time. So regional transportation reimbursement, chapter seventy funding, and circuit breaker are the three numbers that we rely on in terms of forecasting our FY twenty-four budget. We have not received those. So at the latest, it'll be at the end of this month, we'll have a baseline number.
We got rid today, March first.
March first.
Any other questions? Now a presentation.
Sure. So this evening, we have Rhoda Webb, who's our multilingual, Director of Multilingual Learners and Equity, and she will be providing an update to the committee. So welcome, Rhoda.
Thank you.
Do you need me to move, Rhoda? Are you?
I will present, yes. So, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity this evening to be able to share about the multilingual learner education program that we have here at Algonquin. These are a few of the guidance documents. Of course, the program is built around both federal and state laws. What you see listed there are a few of the guidance that we have to follow from the Department of Education, and there are two links there. The Massachusetts Blueprint for L-Success has a wealth of information on the DESI website, and also the information on an EL data dashboard. What you see here as I talk, you'll see us addressing in our strategic plan, Vision twenty twenty-six, empowering learners, equity of opportunity, and healthy and balanced learners. We have shifted in our district instead of calling our students English learners multilingual learners, because that acknowledges that our students are asset-based, they do speak another language, and they come to us with other languages, sometimes more than one. So you'll hear both at the state level, also the term being used, so that's why you see up there both terms, multilingual learner and English learner. The state definition is very simplistic. An English learner is a student whose first language is not English, and who is currently not able to perform ordinary classroom, classroom work in English. The federal definition is more reflective of who our students are, and it's who has difficult, who have difficulty speaking, reading, writing, or understanding the English language in order to access what is happening in the classroom, or meet the state proficiency levels on achievement of state assessments, and to the ability to successfully achieve in the classroom where the language of instruction is English, or the opportunity to participate fully in society. So tonight, I'm going to explain to you how the program works here in Algonquin, and it is the same in all of our schools. So the first thing, which is most important, is getting to know our students. Every family in Massachusetts fills out a home language survey. We use the DESI Home Language Survey, and when a family speaks more than one language or is, has a different home language, we are required by the Department of Education to provide a language screening, an English proficiency screening for the students, because we have to ensure that the students have enough English to be able to access and be successful in the classrooms. What we do in our district and spend a lot of time is getting to know our families, every student individually and their assets, what they come to us with, what the student's exposure is in different communities, and therefore, we spend about an hour, an hour and a half speaking to families and the students as they enter Algonquin. I mentioned the language proficiency screening, which is a requirement by the Department of Education. We implement the WIDA screener from the, that, that is required by the department. And if a student qualifies according to the, to the results, then the student becomes a multilingual learner in our district. Parents are notified through a placement letter. This is not a surprise. We are in communication with families so that they know whether the student is going to qualify for the program or not. And this is translated into the family's home language, because they do let us know when they need translations or interpretation to access their students' education. What I'm going to show you now is a bit of data in our district. We'll talk about trend analysis over the years, the home languages that we have here at Algonquin, race and ethnicity of our students, proficiency level analysis, and staffing. So the first time we started counting, our multilingual learners within two thousand and four and five, you can see that there were four students. So if you look along the horizontal line, the dark green bar will explicitly tell you how many multilingual learners they were. And we have skipped years, because we have the data over all these years, till this current year. But you see that right now, if you go to the far right, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, it says twenty-nine students who are multilingual learners. There is actually one more enrolling, so it'll become thirty. And if you look at the light green bars, those are the students who have been reclassified for the program, and I'll explain how that happens. So at this point, there are thirty-two students who are, have been reclassified here at Algonquin. If you look at the next data point that I'm going to show, our home language surveys of our multilingual learners and those who have been reclassified, I'd like to let you know that first language not English for Algonquin, there are fifteen percent of our population has a home language other than English, and that is a self-reported category, although we've been looking at home languages since preschool, so that is overall population at Algonquin. When we look at the languages that we have this year, you will see that the prevalent languages are Portuguese, Spanish, Arabic, and Russian, but you can see the diversity among our students who have a language. We view languages as assets. A language is never a barrier, it's a means of communication, and it is, we know how to communicate with families, no matter what that language is, and we have structures in place for that. If a family cannot read or cannot speak in English, all districts are required by law to translate documents and have access to, give families access to the child's education. So the structure that we have in place in our district is in the Office of Multilingual Learners. We organize translation interpretation for our ten schools. I'd like to highlight the work done by Deb Young, multilingual learner specialist, who is in touch with every single department and administrators and throughout our district to be able to coordinate the interpretation and translation that our students need. We have forty-five students at Algonquin whose parents need interpretation, and the languages are Portuguese, Spanish, Arabic, Vietnamese, and Chinese, and for translation, forty-two students, again, the languages that I mentioned before, adding Japanese and Russian as well. We also know you, with the, one of the reasons that Parent Square was chosen this year is a means of communication from the administration to parents is because our families can choose the language in which they receive all notifications coming from the school. And our families are reading notifications in Spanish, Portuguese, and they have access to the notifications that come out from school. So there are other platforms also that we use, but when, whenever there is a meeting or there are documents, for example, report cards, those are translated professionally so that us, we are ensuring accuracy of those documents. And the same happens for special education parents requiring translation, that all that work is done professionally. To take a look at race and ethnicity, this is only a multilingual learners in our, in our schools. You'll see African-American or black is eleven percent. Our Asian population, three-point-seven. Hispanic is the majority of the students in our program, white at thirty-three percent. And this information comes from DART, from ELLs, from the Department of Education. One thing that is very important is what is the language proficiency? And when you're learning a language, you're thinking of four domains, that's listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And you can be at different levels in all those domains, and it fluctuates, it's never a static number. But this data was frozen in order to present tonight, and what is important for you to know is the first three levels. So if you go from left to right, the entering level, our students that come, and at Algonquin, most of our students come from abroad. If a student has, was a multilingual learner qualified into the program for elementary level, it is highly likely that they're no longer in the program by the time they reach high school, or at the very end of the program. So the students coming to us at Algonquin can have, probably have never learned English before, so they might not be speaking any words of English, or they may be at the word level. That's level one or entering. The low developing, which would be like a low, very low intermediate, is speaking and reading and writing in simple sentences in English. That's called a foundational level. And we have, at this point, about forty-one percent of our students that are at that level in learning English. The transitional level is from a high intermediate, also called high developing, to what we call a bridging. By the time the student is at a level five, we're really looking at reclassifying the student. That's when they're able to, especially writing, which is the last domain, to be able to reach the high levels of proficiency needing, write, writing in complex compound sentences, writing essays. And that's when we are reclassifying students and following the, the criteria of the Department of Education. The foundational level, which is a lot of our stu, where a lot of our students are right now, that is in, in resource-intensive and staffing-intensive, and we, that's where we provide the most instruction of English language development, and at the foundational level, it is less instruction, and I'll explain that in a few minutes. But again, the demands are much higher, because the students are needing to perform at a much higher level at that time. One thing that is very important to know is that multilingual learners are not a homogeneous group, nor do they have a fixed profile. There are many factors that we take into consideration when working with our students, their educational background, their home language, their consistency in school, their mobility, if they come from urban or rural settings, possible trauma, individual factors that impact learning, their learning challenges, possibly, possible diagnosis of disabilities, their post-secondary goals, and of course, the pandemic. And we're worried during the pandemic, and some have fled trauma or war or different circumstances from the countries where they have left. We know that our students are doing double the work, they're learning English, and at the same time, they're studying core content areas in English. Therefore, our multilingual learners must perform double the amount of work compared to other students, and at the same time, they're say, they're held to the same accountable, accountability standards. standards. That is from a research, and it still holds true, from Double the Work is the name of the paper of 2007. However, this still holds through. And Harvard Immigration Initiative, if you check their website, has a lot of very good resources, an updated research. And it is really affirming what that other paper had said, and is giving a lot of information about who our immigrant students are today in the whole of the United States. So if we look at general profiles, we work with newcomers. Those are students that have been here for six months, until, up to six months or up to a year. English learners with disabilities, long-term English learners, these are terms used by the Department of Education. Students with limited or interrupted formal schooling, the pandemic can be an example. You know, how, how much engagement was there during the pandemic? And former English learners are the students who we reclassify. The program model that we have in our district is called Sheltered English Emergent. It is a two-component model, and it's one of the models accepted by the Department of Education, in which we have the sheltered content instruction, that's what happens in the subject areas here at Algonquin. They're taught by licensed content teachers who are SEI endorsed in the core subjects. Students get access to grade-level information, discipline-specific, and of course, the students are in their courses throughout the day. There is another component which is required, and that is, it's known as English as a second language or English language development. It must be taught by ESL licensed teachers, and the linguistic instruction has to be delivered in a systematic, explicit, and sustained focused way. We follow the WIDA frameworks. It occurs, we have courses here at Algonquin, which I'll show you in a minute. And we have two ELD teachers, Ms. Simpson and Mrs. Oyola, who become the lifelines of our students. And we'll talk more about how we work here at Algonquin. Because one thing that is not apparent is that as the students are learning English, and especially when they come to the United States for the first time, it's that the acculturation process that happens. And that's why I'm talking that we, we really are very mindful at this whole of the school about the student's social emotional well-being. That goes along with culture shock, getting used to how schooling is done, how schooling can be different in other countries, what are the social norms, what is acceptable here? Something, and it has happened, you know, in some countries, you do not quote or paraphrase the, the words by an expert. You write them exactly how the expert says because who is, you know, who am I to be able to understand what the expert meant? But here, that would be, that's plagiarism. So there's a lot that goes into adjusting to a new environment. As I said, in the ELD classrooms, we have, we have to follow the WIDA standards. This is just an idea, a big idea that you will find, which is equity of opportunity, integration, collaboration, and a functional approach to language. And the five areas that our units target are the language of social instruction, the language of school, English Language Arts, Mathematics, Science, and Social Studies. The photos that I am showing are of our students in different environments here at Algonquin. And this is Ms. Honey here at the library, teaching our students how to access databases. You will also see in other photos that students are getting card, library cards to the town, how to navigate, how to find the resources. So this is definitely a community approach in, in the whole of Algonquin. These are the courses that we offer at Algonquin. And it, of course, will depend on the enrollment that we have every year. So we have English Language Development Level One, that is for true beginners in the language or the, that are at the phrase level. So it goes by levels. Level Two, sometimes we combine Level One and Two, Three, Four, and Five. There is also an introduction to US History. Those are the students at the foundational level, the beginners in the language, to start teaching the language associated with history, and then they go into US History here at Algonquin. There is also an L academic study. And I know that Laurie Zanini, last month, presented on the co-taught biology class. Ms. Oyola is a co-taught teacher in that class. And we also have a co-taught math for our students. And Ms. Simpson is a co-teacher with a math teacher here at Algonquin. What you see there on the right, the unit, woman's role in colonial America, I wanted to show you that because the students are learning English and they're learning how to use the past tense and past tense verbs and how to write sentences in the past tense. They're also learning about the content. So I think every time I walk into a classroom with a level ones and twos of students, I am very humbled by the amount of work that the students are putting in, in learning. You know the standards that we have here at the school and that they're learning the language and they're learning signal words. And so the highly skilled efforts that, that Ms. Oyola, Ms. Simpson have to be able to be introducing the content language and the English language needed for those content areas is remarkable. Did I skip a slide? Yes, I did. So accountability. Of course, all of our students receive report cards. There's a statewide test for English learners and multilingual learners, which is a requirement, is a summative test. It is called ACCESS or Assessing Comprehension and Communication in English State by State. That will give the levels, it's a yearly assessment, but the level of English proficiency of the student in listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And then, of course, MCAS, which is high stakes for the high school. We just closed the testing window for this year for our 29 students. We get reports, school reports, district reports, and individual reports on each student. And this is what the parent will receive. So again, it is a point in time, but that's a Level Two student overall that you see there. And there's an explanation, it's a one-sheet document, and there's an explanation of what every level means so that the parents can understand the report. What happens when we get the, the access report, and this happens in every school, we mail those reports to the, to the families in English and in the home language when needed. We look at the exit criteria of students. And if a student gets an overall 4.2 on the access and a 3.9 in literacy, then we are looking at reclassifying the student from the program. At Algonquin, we're looking for a student to reach that criteria and be able to reclassify them so that they can have access to other subjects. We also look at, you know, we're mindful of their reading level, of their writing samples. Like I said, writing is the last really domain in which high proficiency levels are achieved, and then MCAS. Reclassification letters are sent home in English and in the home language when needed. And then we monitor students for four years. When I mentioned to you about that dark green bar of the reclassification, this school year in the fall, we reclassified seven students. We, and then about 18 of the students were the fourth year that we're monitoring them. So as from next year, we do not monitor those students, but we have data over four years of how those students did. And we're required to do that once they're in that number four monitoring of former English learners. So some highlights that I would like to mention tonight is the family and school partnership that we have. We strive to get ev, to know every student individually, to get to know their story. Their story is very important to us. We look at their assets. It doesn't matter what, if they've had schooling or not schooling, we can always build upon the assets that students have come to us with. I'd like to mention the Seal of Bilitracy. I know there'll be a world language presentation next month, but our students also take the Seal of Bilitracy, the nine that have signed up so far for this year. And more information will be provided next month on that. We have our summer program, and I reported on that in the fall, two weeks for our students. And an after-school program for our multilingual learners here, run by Ms. Oyola and Ms. Simpson. All that is funded out of Title III, which is one of the entitlement grants that is only for multilingual learners. We introduced this year an elevation, which is a student management program where we house all the data of our English learners and our former English learners. The Language Access, which is interpreters and translators that we have to, for our families to have access to their child's education. The English Learner Parent Advisory Council is being formed. The true collaboration that happens here at the school, you know, among all administrators, guidance department, the nurses, who are crucial in, in working with our students and their families. I know I'm going to leave people out. Student Support Services, every single level, everybody is mindful of our students and the work that, that goes into giving the best possible education, educational experience for each student. Here again, you see our Level One and Two students working on the PH lines and learning sequencing words and, and the language embedded. And this is, they've learned it in their content class, but this is now they're learning the language that has to go with it even further, honing in on the language skills. And then the Cultural Through Music Festival. So you're all invited to come on March 31st here at Algonquin, and we're going to be bringing back our International Night, where is our families from all our 10 schools get together and around a pot meal. You know, we're enjoying meals and getting to know each other and meeting families from across all our schools. So thank you very much for listening to me tonight. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you very much for the
You're welcome.
... detailed information, particularly data. This is unusual.
I mean, I ask this every year, but I think it's probably interesting enough to everybody to understand. It always blows me away when I see the list of languages that we support.
Yes.
And so could you just explain a little bit as to how we, I mean, because we certainly don't have individuals that speak each one of those languages. So could you explain a little bit of how we, we accomplish success with?
Yes. So in the ESL field, that's what we're trying to do, is how to teach a language. And we also become very mindful of, we look at the structures of the languages that our students speak and to understand the differences. We also use what is called trans languaging. And here's where our students are the experts. So you'll see Mrs. Oyola, Ms. Simpson, providing certain terms, especially for the students who have been schooled or who know, have the oral language, to understand the term in the language. And when we don't know it, the students can provide it. So we have bilingual dictionaries, of course, this technology. But you will see that a multiplicity of languages are used all the time. And the stronger the schooling of a student, the faster they will learn English. Therefore, you always want to encourage students to continue to learn in their home language because it's an asset. So we use our students as assets. So here is where our training is in teaching how to learn a language. And therefore, when to be able to, it is fine to use all languages in a classroom for the sake of communication and learning. And then the concepts, especially at the high school level, because MCAS is high stakes here, and I didn't talk too much about MCAS. But that's how we're able to teach the students. Yes. I hope I answered your question.
If I can piggyback onto that, and forgive me if I'm reminding, but we will be offering, and you're, I think, aware of this, Rota, next year, we're offering a course in Portuguese for heritage speakers and Spanish for heritage speakers, which is not the same as ELD, of course, but we anticipate that that'll provide a real opportunity for success that students sometimes struggle to achieve. And this should be, we anticipate great benefits to our students, especially our Portuguese speaking and Spanish speaking, because those are two highest populations.
That's right.
So we're very much looking forward to that.
That's right. And part of the after-school, what I didn't mention, so MCAS, and it depends on when the age of the student, of course, it's high stakes, right, for graduation? So students, you know, a student that's coming in and is a junior, but is coming in as Level One, so they're doing the, taking the retake for biology, the retake for math, you know, and they might, they can take it multiple times until they pass, right? And then ELA is coming up, and they've taken ACCESS, and they've taken the midterms. And so, and Ms. Simpson and Ms. Oyola have after-school, MCAS prep, really targeting, you know, the use of technology, how to, the language that is needed to act, to, that they need to be in order to pass MCAS. And they'll take it as many times as is needed until they can pass the test. I know I've forgotten, I met with them, I tried to get all the notes that I needed in order to transmit, but we, we do have a wonderful group of students and teachers here at Algonquin. And, and it's a community effort, it's the power of we.
Well, I just had a question about, so the students at the foundational level
Yes.
Have seven and a half hours at least a week, right, of instruction. When does that happen?
So, so this is what, what can happen. So if they're at the foundational level, they might have ELD One and ELD One and Two, and then there's the EL introduction, yes, sorry, EL, US History. So all that counts. The, the addition of all those count.
So it's basically incorporated into other courses that are part of the curriculum?
Yes. A co-taught class will also count. So, but this is targeted, it's targeted instruction. That's why we have the co-teachers, you know, going into biology. It's, it's purposeful, right? Because those are MCAS areas, subjects, and that's why it's biology and math. And they're adjusting the courses according to who the students are every year.
So that still leaves them time to take electives?
Yes. Again, depending on when they join Algonquin, and this is why guidance, you know, we work very closely, and they're experts in working collaboratively, that they do get the amount of credit. So the amount of electives will depend on how many credits a student needs according to when they joined Algonquin and what transcript they come to with us. Guidance analyzes the transcripts that they come, if they've been in school in their countries. And we'll give credit for those courses.
Thank you. A few years ago, I believe, the school added the Seal of Bilitracy.
Yes.
So our students, our students with EL backgrounds available to take that also?
Yes.
That's great. Other questions for Rota?
May I ask, oh, sorry, so
Yes.
If they're Level One
Yes.
How do they participate in a regular class? Do they understand what's being said?
Very difficult. That's why the, that their schedules will have a lot of the, will have the co-taught classes and the ELD courses will be primary in the classroom, but then there are other classes that they can't, you know, they're in music, they're in art, they're in other courses as well. But it makes it very difficult. And the SEI endorsement was for Level Three up, intermediates up, not for newcomers. So that's why I'm saying it's, it's very intense work that happens at that time. Yes. It's very hard.
One other question. So at the, I think at your second slide, you mentioned that a home that doesn't have English as the, the primary
Yes.
You'll, you'll get a professional to do it. What does that mean? You said a professional to translate it into the home, home language. What, what does that mean?
Oh, what that means is, for example, the, there are documents when families need, you know, the documents, for example, report cards, you know?
Sure.
We also give
I get the documents.
Yes, documents.
Who does that?
Oh, so we have Spanish translator interpreters, Portuguese, so there are professionals who do that for us.
But you got a lot of languages out there.
Yes. We contract out for services.
Yes.
Yes. So we have a cadre of
Every time.
Translators, correct.
That's a lot of times.
Any
During the course of a year.
Teacher conferences, special education meetings, we're required to provide translation and interpretation.
Yeah. Yeah. But It's quite a bit.
It is.
Yep.
Also, parents who are deaf, those students also could be classified, so translation services. You don't use Lexicate, or you haven't looked into
So, so
Pull it all together, or?
And that's, that's a tool for when everyone is together, right? And these are individual, for example, these are confidential meetings when we need the interpreters, right? So, but yes, I know what you're talking about.
Lexicate can translate too, but it's a little expensive comparatively, so, okay.
Well, Rota, so if the students are in the co-taught biology and math
Yes.
And they're not successful at their MCAS the first try
Yes.
Can they, do they take that class again?
Yes.
Do they still get credit for it again?
So then there's a plan here at Algonquin, so that's why every student's looked at individually as what it is that they need, and is it just prep to be able to take that, take it again, and especially as their English proficiency increases? So that is tailored actually for every single student.
Great.
Yes. Until they pass it.
So I just would like to make two general comments. First of all, I think our ELD department is outstanding at Algonquin. I think when you look at the graphs of numbers of students, it's deceiving because it really depends on the number of students who are in Level One, Two, and Three, really determines the staffing levels you need to be able to support their education. And then just secondly, the Seal of Bilinguality is initiative school-wide, not just for our EL population
Yes.
But for all students.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it just speaks to the fact that being bilingual or multilingual is an asset, and it's an outstanding signal for future employees, colleges, that when students' transcripts are for the college application or employee application, it speaks to the fact that they're bilingual or multilingual, and employees like to see that. So it's, it's a nice
Yes.
A nice program that Rota has helped foster here at the high school.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Rota.
Thanks, Rota.
Thank you, Rota.
Next on the agenda?
Sure, so next on the agenda is an overview of ESY summer programming. So in my tenure here as Assistant Superintendent and Superintendent, I can't recall a time where the committee was presented information about the extended school year program and what it is and what criteria is used. So I did invite Marie Allen and Helene Dejardin. As you know, Marie is Director of Student Support Services, and Helene is Assistant Director of Student Support Services. Helene is instrumental in leading the ESY program across our three districts, and will provide an update. I just also want to just clarify, the comment that may, was made, that the shift in programming was as a result of a budget reduction. In FY21, that ESY budget was $36,000, in FY22 it was $35,000, in FY23 it was $76,000, so it was doubled, and in FY24 it's 11% increase, so it's $85,000. So by no means do I want the committee to leave thinking that there has been a reduction to ESY budget moving forward.
Thank you, everybody, for allowing us to present extended school year services to you tonight. We're hoping that once we go through this presentation, you'll have an understanding of how students are found eligible for extended school year services. And Helene is our ESY coordinator and runs our programming through the summer. And a lot of preparation goes on. We started, what, in November maybe, start, maybe even October, preparing for our summer programming, which is extended school year services. So why do we offer ESY services to students on IEPs? There's several reasons. The first piece is that we do acknowledge that all children regress to some extent between school years. So what we need to do is determine whether that regression would likely be substantial, whether it would require a greater time than usual to recoup. So we're talking about recoupment and substantial regression. Those are the two terms that we, our first piece of why we consider students on IEPs eligible for ESY services, and that recoupment is more time than the, the level that the child had to achieve before a break in service. So what we do to measure that is, at the end of a school year, we take data of where the student is on their goals and objectives, and then when we come back in September, we also take data to find out how long it takes them to recoup those skills. So that's one measure. The next slide is annually, at least once annually, the team considers the need for ESY programming. It's not made on a global level, it is done at a team meeting. So, and it is individual, it's made on an individual basis. So the team comes together and reviews data, looks at all the goals and objectives in the IEP, and determines where, based on the data that they have coming into the meeting, where a student may need services over the summer. And that means it may not be the entire IEP. It could be certain objectives in a goal, under a goal, or certain goals. So there's many things that the team considers. So the difficulties with recoupment and the aspect of significant regression are the main things, like I had already talked about. Those things consist of a loss of performance levels before the break in service, like I have just explained, their limited learning rate, the length of time it takes them to recoup, and requires them to review or relearn previously attained objectives. And the child's recruitment, again, is greater than the period of time the district allows for all other children to review and retain learning. Here are some other considerations, so it's not only about substantial regression. We also have to consider the degree of the child's impairment, the parent's ability to provide structure at home, the child's rate of progress, the child's specific behavior and/or physical problems, the availability of alternative resources, and I'll talk about that a little bit later, the child's ability to interact with non-disabled peers, the specific curricular areas in which the child needs continuing attention, vocational and transition needs of the child, and whether the service requested is extraordinary rather than usual. So this, so substantial regression and recoupment, together with all these other factors, go into determining eligibility for ESY services. And again, it may not be the same services delivered at the same frequency provided during the regular school year, and that is a team decision. Here are some of the programs here at the high school, well, these are all of our programs here at the high school for students on IEPs. We have an ARHS academic program, we have the Academics Pragmatics Program, Social Pragmatics, the TLC Two, and the CAP program. I don't know, Helene, if you want to, some of these are two-day, three-day?
Right, I can talk about that.
Okay.
So the academic program is typically two days a week, generally it's Tuesday and Thursday from nine to two. The pragmatic, academic pragmatic program in the past has been four days, this year is recommended to be three days. Social pragmatics is two mornings a week. TLC Two also has been four days a week and is being recommended to be three days this week, this year. And then the CAP program is, oh, and I'm sorry, the TLC Two program is a seven-week program, the rest of the programs are five weeks. So the ESY CAP program is five weeks, in the past has been four days. The program description this year includes three days a week.
So in addition to the IEP goals and objectives, every student on an IEP has a transition planning form. And in that transition planning form is the student's vision and sometimes the family's vision, and it is our responsibility to move toward that student's and family's vision as they reach age 22 and move on to adult services. Who plays a role in the transition planning form is a collaboration between the family and student, the community, and, what am I forgetting? Family, student, and
School and agencies.
School, of course, school. So, so those three collaborate together in order to achieve the vision or move toward the vision by the time they reach the age of 22. We have very, very good transition programming with our community members. We partnership, we do a lot of partnership with Mass Rehab Commission, and that's in the form of a pre-ets program, and many of our families take advantage of that. And we have our representative, Rich Blackier, from MRC that comes to our school to talk with our families and our students during team meetings, to talk about the types of services they can take advantage of, and they don't have to be 22 years old to receive those services, they can do that from 14 years old and on up. And some of those services are job coaching, job interviewing skills, and various other things that they do provide. We have a transition coordinator dedicated to that, and she really assists families in applying for those services. Families can take advantage of those services during the summers as well. We also have partnerships with agencies through a 688 referral, and that is DDS, Department of Developmental Services, Department of Mental Health, DMH, and MRC. And those, those conversations start to happen through a 688 referral, parents have interviews with those agencies, and some of those services can be provided before they are 22 as well, and some of those can also be provided in the summer. So, so there are various ways for a student to receive services during the summer, and one of those is ESY programming.
May I ask one question on this slide?
Sure.
Does a student solely participate in one of these services, or do they potentially participate in
You mean in the programs?
In the, for the ESY services, so you
Usually they'll be in one of those programs. They don't necessarily attend the entire time, like for CAP students, they usually attend the entire time. Some of these students may come in for just math support, and they get tutoring, so they won't do the full two-day program, or they'll just come in for a specific need, or reading services, and that's across the board. So it's really individualized, it's not that, that one-size-fits-all for our programming.
And these programs also include related services such as speech and language, occupational therapy, physical therapy, when those are indicated through the student's IEP and their schedule modification.
And so the last slide is the FAQ or FAC that's put out by the Department of Education, which you have in your packets tonight, and I think you can even click on that if you want, I think it'll work. And here's, here's the guide that actually answers a lot of the questions about ESY and what we're asked to do as a school to consider students for eligibility for summer services or ESY services. That's it, that's it for the slides. It'll come to me. Are there any questions?
Kathy?
So, why did you guys cut back on days? What was the decision behind cutting back from four days?
So we do that based on data. We are, as a school, we do look and calibrate programming occasionally, just to take a look at what makes sense for the data that we have in front of us, and that's why we made the decision we made.
And so on the days that you cut, are there other options for those families? Or is that a day that they have to figure out on their own?
Well, like I said, we collaborate with MRC through pre-ets. There's other programs that definitely can be taken advantage of for that extra day. And also, I have to mention that after a team meeting, we propose an IEP with all of the recommendations. Parents have procedural safeguards that they can also enact to respond to the IEP. So then we can have further discussions, like let's say they reject the, the ESY programming, we come back as a team and talk about it. And they can also exercise their right to stay put, which means they can still have those four days.
Just also to piggyback on what Marie said in terms of the data collection, and a piece of that is also observation, so I've been coordinating the ESY program for several years now, I think it's four. One of the things that we do during the program is observation in classrooms, observations of students, and we review data that is collected by teachers and service providers as well. Some of the feedback that we have received from our service providers and teachers in the summer program is that four days is more than enough time, more time than they need to cover the goals and the objectives and the specialized instruction that students require in the summer. So that is a piece of it as well, is in doing those observations and collecting that data and that feedback from our teachers, that that is part of it.
So it's done very thoughtfully, and decisions are made very thoughtfully when we consider changing up some of our programming.
I guess I would have just a question related to the IEPs themselves, in a general sense, which would be, assuming that a, assuming a parent obviously exercises their right to stay put, they would be entitled to continue to four days of ESY services, correct?
Correct.
As you mentioned.
Whatever's on the act of IEP.
Whatever's on the act of IEP.
Yep.
And so the recommendation to move to a three-day schedule is a result of IEP analysis and the ability to determine that the services meet what has been developed at team meetings for those particular students, correct?
Correct, that those, that whatever is being specifically targeted for that student can be done in that amount of time.
A question is, sorry, another question would be, when, I'm assuming that, since I've sat through team meetings that have this type of information, are parents presented these additional programs that are beyond the ESY and CAP program, so the external programming that is available to those? Are they, are they told about that, and is that incorporated as part of the IEP at those meetings?
Do you mean like the outside agencies?
The outside agencies.
That is not part of an IEP, but it is part of the transition planning form, and that is documented in the transition planning form if they, for them to access MRC pre-ets or to, a 688 referral has been made, all of that's documented there.
Do we, do we generally find that parents are open to accessing the programs that are provided by those outside agencies, or do they tend to gravitate more towards the programming that's provided here at Algonquin?
I think it's both. We've had parents successfully access the outside supports, and it really is to the benefit of a family because we need to assist families in transitioning to adult services by the time they're 22, and if they start now, it's a lot more seamless when they get to 22 and they have to transition to those adult services.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Are those services, those outside services, something that families have to pay for for the summer?
No. Well, it depends, like MRC, pre-ets, no. I don't know, as far as the 688 referrals and DDS, it, sometimes it's part of their health insurance, sometimes it's part of their, some students get ABA services, and that, that is paid for through parents, through their insurance as well.
Well So the transitional services, when does that start? I mean, would it be as soon as freshman year of high school, or?
The transition planning form, that is developed when a student turns 14. So if they're 13 within the, they're going to turn 14 within that annual review period, then they have a transition planning form developed at that meeting, even though they're 13. at that meeting, even though they're thirteen.
Is there, um, a coordinator or like, uh, a social worker that's dedicated to, like, the, this is complicated, um, you know, some of these are more straightforward, like the academic services, ESY. Um, CAP programming is complicated because of the transition to adult services, and the state's very complicated. You just mentioned a bunch of numbers and letters, you know? And, and so is there, um, like, a, a social worker on staff or anyone who can help, um, bridge that? I mean, it's, 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 you know, cause once twenty-two happens, that's, that's it. And it, and then there's a lot more, you know, um, uh, the state has to offer. But accessing it and all those is, is, is hard to, um, know just what's even out there sometimes. And fill out paperwork and things like that.
And we do have a transition coordinator at our high school, who is a school psychologist, who does work with the outside agencies and also assists parents in applying, uh, the six-eight-eight referrals and the MRC pre-ets. Those outside agencies have contacts, and we're in regular contact with them and invite them to IEP team meetings as well to try and bridge the gap.
Just wondering if a social worker or psychologist is the best role there, but that's not my role, so.
In the formula of thinking this through from all the different angles, how much was it included, uh, how difficult it is to staff? OT, P, T, S, T, for example? Um, because I thought that was mentioned in the NSPAC meeting.
I mean, it's not a factor in why we decided to go to three days. We did, uh, talk about attracting staff, uh, our own staff to work. We can always contract out for people to, to work in our, uh, in our ESY program, which we do. Right, but we do it. But, um, when you have staff that's already here and work with the students, there's a lot less, um, ramp-up time for students, uh, to access their learning because the teachers already know them, so.
Two more questions?
Yep.
Is, um, is there a specific reason why the, um, the numbers that you, uh, that Greg, um, mentioned, uh, like, one of those, like, doubled? Is there a specific reason why those, that you could share, why those numbers doubled?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, um, we've increased our investment in the ESY program from twenty-one to the recommended budget that I will present to you this evening. I think that we've tried to expand the program to offer more to our students. Um, and, and that is reflected in the increased costs. Um, I, I'll just also make a comment around, um, attracting people to work the ESY program. As we exited the pandemic, um, and as teachers were truly exhausted from their responsibilities during the school year, um, it has been extremely challenging to recruit, uh, people to work ESY. That's separate from what we're talking about, but it has been a reality that, um, a tremendous amount of effort has gone into trying to staff our ESY program over the past two years with dedicated and appropriate staff to meet the needs of kids. And that's not just in our district, but districts across the Commonwealth. People are burned out. The employee, the, um, people who are applying for working in the summer, not just in ESY and all sorts of programs, um, is not the same as pre-pandemic.
Kathy, you have a question?
It was said that, um, if we contracted, uh, support to work for ESY versus on-staff, it was cheaper, is that true? And if it's true.
Contracting is not cheaper.
Much more expensive.
But.
Uh, sorry, the, the other way, yeah, so the contracts, why? Is it true that, that contracting is more expensive than existing staff?
Yes.
If that's the case, why?
Well, just like in business, when you contract out, um, you have to pay the agency fees on top of things, um, on top of the actual, whatever that person earns.
Oh, so like a temp safe.
There are agencies that specialize in certain things like speech and language or OT services, and they hire, and then you hire the agency. Whereas.
But the staffing.
If you can just hire direct, it's, it's much better.
Okay.
An example, an example would be a speech and language pathologist who is an employee of ours, um, you know, it'd be fifty dollars an hour. Just contract out, we could see anywhere between a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour.
And I will say as an SLP, that you're still getting paid the fifty.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, that hasn't changed. I, in fact, a lot of it has gone down. I'm seeing thirty, forty dollars an hour for SLPs, which is, um, shocking. But the agencies are, um, definitely charging more.
Can I just also comment on the increase in expenses over the past several years? I think what we're seeing from fiscal year twenty-three, the ESY budget to fiscal year twenty-four, is that we're also having to, uh, meet the market demand of, of increased costs for labor. That districts across the Commonwealth are increasing their pay to try to get the people to work over the summer. So nurses, SLPs, uh, most of the people who are working in our ESY program are shopping for, um, ESY programs in the area where they can make the most amount of money, rightfully so. So, um, part of the, um, eleven percent increase from FY twenty-three to FY twenty-four is also a market correction to try to, um, be competitive in our area.
So I'm just trying to get my head around this whole issue that we heard about from the parents earlier. So if I had a program that was four days, and now I'm being told it's, it's going to three, and, and I understand that the regression, um, argument that you're, you're saying, we can, we can make sure that these children aren't regressing in three days. You know, in three days, we can teach them what they need to know. But still, as a parent, okay, but it's one less day. So, you know, I, I can understand the angst and, you know, why they're upset. So, but I, I guess I'm not getting a solution. I mean, we're doing what we need to do, or what we're required to do as a, as a school department, uh, department, apparently. Are you saying that, like, these transitional services, or there are other things that can maybe take up that extra day?
Yes, and we can work with parents to, to work that out.
I also think that the feedback that we've received over the years it, from families, is that they like to know what the summer program will be the following summer as early as possible, so they can make plans for their family, whether it be vacation or things like that. Um, so we put out the program descriptions in the fall.
Maybe a bit after.
It may have been November, December, I can't remember the exact date. That was before many team meetings have happened. We still have situations where team meetings have not happened because of the dates of the IEP. So some students may not have their IEP meeting until February, may not be until March. So a lot of families have learned about this change through us publishing the program descriptions before having a chance to have a meeting with their team where that data should be communicated from team members with the families. And I think that, that has also played a, a little bit of a role in this, because those conversations with teachers to parents have, just haven't happened in all cases.
Can I also make a comment? So, um, in partnership with NSPAC, um, there was a lot of conversation around, thinking about ESY and the structures. One of the recommendations from NSPAC was to communicate these changes or these proposed changes, um, early in November. So, working in collaboration, those changes were communicated. And again, to Helene's point, many of the team meetings to talk about ESY services have not happened yet. So we're, you know, we're trying to be proactive in our communication to, to provide parents with planning and, um, an understanding of our thinking. At the same time, we have not had the ESY meetings and the team meetings to really think about what services are needed for students. I think one of the important points is that, again, this, the provision of stay put is really important. If a parent, um, is not happy with a change, the stay put provision is what they received last year needs to be provided this year. And that's the legal requirement, and we will provide that. But again, it's, it's a change. And I think I do support the change. I think that, um, we also look at attendance in ESY, um, across our pre-K through eight district and the high school, and look at attendance on Mondays and Fridays. There is a difference in attendance from our students on Mondays and Fridays. So it's also looking at, um, you know, trying to create a program that meets the needs of students, IEP first and foremost. We can retract, re- attract and retain people to work these programs and support, um, the loss of regression for our students and, and provide recruitment opportunities.
I saw one more here.
So I guess what I would say is I understand that you wanted to get the information out prior to the meetings, but I'm not sure it did a good benefit. And I think that that's something that really needs to be recognized going forward, is that if you're gonna do something like that, you have to figure out how to do it and communicate it properly. So there's an understanding going forward versus, you know, here's the information, but we're not gonna give you anything else until you meet the team leaders. And I know that, and I don't know the laws of IEPs and how that all works, but there has to be something that works. There has to be something that works a little bit better in the communication part of it. And I think as a, in a general conversation that we've always had as a school committee is communication, you know, and how to get the points across in the right manner and that kind of stuff. So that would be my only disappoint, not my only, but I think is a disappointing, I understand how you did it, but I'm not quite sure that was, you know, personally, I'm not quite sure that was done in the right manner.
Yeah, it's a chicken and an egg, it's.
I, 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 I get it, but if I had a child in that position, I don't know if I'd be happy either. You know what I mean? It's just, you gotta get, you have to figure that piece of it out a little bit better for the future.
Pursuant to that, when would the meetings be done so that timing going forward could be accommodated? I, I know IEP meetings are held throughout the year. So is there a window where, where it makes sense for both sides?
We do ask our staff to communicate with families, um, by the beginning of March. So oftentimes, we have students whose IEP cycle just falls in April or May, which is really late. It's really late for families, it's really late for us to plan in terms of how many people we may have. We send registration in April, so we really need to know how many kiddos and what kiddos are being recommended and which programs across preschool all the way through CAP. So we do ask our liaisons that if they have an IEP meeting after March first, that they reach out to parents and have a smaller team meeting to talk about ESY, only ESY at that point, so that families know and we know where, where we're at.
Yep. I, to Kathy's point and Kathleen's point, I agree. I think that, um, pushing off the deadline for publishing that information should be after you've gathered enough information from the IEPs for the upcoming year. So despite NSPAC's suggestion that we have, that you publish this information earlier, I would say having perhaps a mid-March deadline would be best going forward. I guess what I would also say, and again, I'm gonna wrap this up really quickly, which is, I don't have this impression, but I can understand where the public would have the impression that you're publishing that there's going to be a three-day ESY, then you have upcoming IEP team meetings, and then you're basically going to attempt to shoehorn the IEPs into what would be an anticipated three-day ESY. And I do think it's important going forward to make sure that, uh, parents especially, and I can speak as a parent of an individual who, um, is on an IEP, that, um, we're not trying to shoehorn into existing programming, but making sure that the program that we have, um, appropriately addresses the needs of our students. So my suggestion going forward would be, uh, having like a mid-March publishing of that date to avoid this kind of concern going forward.
Can I just make one last comment? So just, uh, in defense of Marie Allen, um, she, um, had re- strong reservations around communicating anything this fall. So, um, hindsight is twenty-twenty. So I just don't want to, I, I think it's important to just to have them, no, I just wanna.
I'm not assuming, I'm just saying, it, you know.
In hindsight.
You have to do a better job. Or, you know what I mean? So, that's all.
John, last question, last one.
It's more of a comment. So as a husband of a, of a, of a wife who used to prepare the IEPs, um, I do appreciate the work that you go through, um, watching her, um, the, the weeks before, uh, prepare the packets and prepare the information for all the parents. The work you do is, 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 it's, it's, it's done with care. And so I, I just wanna thank you for that, and I appreciate the public comment from the parents today. Um, I, uh, I, I, I understand both sides of this conversation. Hindsight is twenty-twenty, I, I concur. I wonder whether or not this group should have a report back. And obviously, at some point, just to kind of hear where this goes, because I think, I think our public would be very interested in us keeping an eye on this and sort of seeing it, appreciating the confidentiality of all the IEPs, appreciating the way that all of these things are going to happen iteratively and, and whenever they do in fact fall, um, something that we should just consider. And I would recommend that you do something of that nature, put it on for a, a future agenda.
Can I just make one?
Final comment.
I just also wanna thank NSPAC. So I think, you know, although there's, there's disagreement around how we've moved forward or what the services are, um, we have, um, a strong partnership with NSPAC, and we are listening. And I'm, I have no doubt that we'll come to, um, common ground, um, to meet the needs of, of students. So I just wanna thank you for your advocacy. Thank you for attending tonight, and I thank you for your ongoing partnership. And, um, we will have future conversations around what this might look like. So, just, thank you.
Now, I'll just sort of back off of you. Superintendent's report.
So, um, I will turn it over to Principal Bevan for the principal's report.
Thank you, Mr. Martino, let me, I am going to. So, um, we're gonna start first by, uh, by hearing from, uh, Ben Shanzar, our student representative. And I do want to share with you that, um, that we're, Ben and I are gonna work on rhythms in the future that allow, uh, me to get to you the, the full amount of information Ben intends to share. This is not because Ben is not organized and it doesn't talk to me frequently about, uh, what he wants to discuss and advocate for. But in the future, we're gonna have the, the slides and other materials to you ahead of time, which did not happen this time, through no fault of Ben's own. So without any further ado, I'm gonna share, uh, uh, here from Ben here for, about our student report.
Thank you. So I think something that we're gonna try to strive for in the future is a monthly student report, um, so that I can provide to you what's going on in the student body, and then you can ask things of me that you want to hear reporting on, and hopefully we can go back and forth and have a nice dialogue. So kind of, first off, um, some recent events that have been going around on the high school. So on February tenth, the Algonquin Writing Center hosted, um, an open mic. It was a fundraiser for the Brown Bag Project, um, so all the profits went to that. And it featured lots of student performances, um, including like singing, um, lots of original creations of student work, both musical and poetry. And there was a wide variety of people there to see it, so that was awesome to watch. Our athletes participated, and I know Mr. Bevan's gonna get into this a little more, in like an athletes' sports mental health night, uh, with Dr. Kim O'Brien. And athletes who I talked to a lot all expressed that it was like a very beneficial event. And, um, other people who I've talked to have expressed that they think it's important that this be expanded in the future to not just athletes, but kind of presentations for the entire student body, to hear about kind of how they can improve their mental health. Our winter show, Tartuffe, is coming up, um, on the. On the cast is participating in a festival on March 4th. So a number of other schools will be coming here to perform their shows. And we are in the non-competitive section, so there's judges, but they just provide feedback. And then that feedback will be applied the following weekend for a variety of community showings in the Black Box on March 9th to 11th. So that's kind of in its final stages of preparation. The costumes got delivered this afternoon, and they're really excited. When we asked people what's on their minds, February break was the most common thing on our survey.
And how much they'll miss us, is I think what they're excited about.
Exactly. The Mental Health Advisory Council or Club hosted, advocacy club rather, hosted Bread Night with author Dana Altman, and they read her book and discussed it. It's called Watch Me Rise: Recipes for Bread and Poems for Growth. So that was a new initiative that a lot of students attended, and again, surrounding mental health. And then the junior class is very excited for their prom coming up on Friday, May 13th, Saturday, May 13th. So that's kind of some of the fun events that students have on their minds. In addition, there's still lots of concern around the Wi-Fi, though we've heard recently of improvements. The district has been working hard to involve the student voice in finding out exactly where the issues are coming from. And improvements are being made shortly, we've been told, and we're looking forward to. And then Gonkplex is something a lot of kids are talking about. A lot of people, when it was first kind of advertised during class meetings, seemed like shocked by the price tag of it all. And some students expressed that they felt confusion about why such an amount was being invested into this when there's other areas, like the amount of textbooks or stuff like that, that aren't. So I think some more communication regarding like the difference between long-term projects and kind of the operating budget is something that students could benefit from. And I was surprised by the number of students who expressed initially at least that those of, who also were seniors and can vote in their class meetings were hesitant to vote for it. So I think if the student vote is something that is gonna be prioritized, that there's more room for kind of advertising to them almost and compelling their vote. In terms of what the student government is working on, so we've been working for the better part of a year now and really solidifying it this fall on an initiative to get free menstrual products available to students. So just this week, we finished up a three-month trial, working with the administration and Ms. Duggan and the school nurses on kind of recording. We put our three all-gender bathrooms, we put free menstrual products into them. I wanna give a huge shout-out to sophomore Amelia Sinclair, who's been almost single-handedly restocking them all and keeping inventory of it all to give us like a good set of data. And now shortly after break, we're gonna be meeting between the student council and admin and the nurses to develop a long-term implementation plan to ensure that students have access to free menstrual products. In addition, we've been working with the class advisors and the administration to improve the student election procedures. So last year, we trialed for the first time, like a conversation with the candidates is what we called it. It's not exactly a debate, but it's a moderated conversation. The Harbinger, which is the student newspaper, asked questions of candidates, and they responded. And we're working on kind of taking feedback from how that went last year, from students who are involved and faculty and the class advisors and administrators to kind of solidify that process and ensure its longevity. And then something more recent is the Student Government Association, both the student council and the student advisory committees, support of a policy to ensure student representation and formalizing the role of the student representative to the regional school committee. So on January 26th, the student council passed a resolution committing the student council to the priorities of the student advisory committee. And the resolution says that the A R H S student council supports the priorities and initiatives established by the A R H S student advisory committee, including this January 26 memorandum regarding the proposition of a policy to ensure student representation and formalize the role of the student representative to the regional school committee. It is the belief and priority of the student council that furthering student voice and representation at all levels of decision-making should be prioritized by school, district, and elected officials, including the regional and combined school committees. That memorandum is in reference to this, which is a letter I have sent to the committee on behalf of the student advisory committee, encouraging the regional school committee to establish a policy to define the role of the student representative to the regional school committee, along with defining the role of student governance at Algonquin Regional High School. Increased student representation is a priority of the student advisory committee, the student council, and the entire Algonquin Student Government Association. In tandem with the student advisory committee's issuance of this memorandum, the Algonquin Student Council has passed the resolution that we just read. And since jurisdiction of major decisions regarding school policy and student life fall upon the regional school committee, it's the belief of the Student Government Association that a student representative should be involved in these decisions. This belief is clearly echoed by the Massachusetts Legislature in Mass. General Law, Chapter 71, Section 38m. As the regional school committee is legally required to have the student representative, the student advisory committee believes it's important for the role to be clearly defined in the policy manual. It is the belief that the student representative be allowed to serve as a non-voting ex officio member representing the student voice at meetings of the combined school committees. And we have submitted the policy for consideration by the regional school committee. And we ask now that the policy be referred to the Policy Development Subcommittee. And the draft of the policy can be found here. It serves to recognize the Algonquin Student Government Association, recognize the Algonquin Student Advisory Committee, define the process by which a student representative to the regional school committee will be selected, and define the role of the representative. And this really serves to kind of solidify and memorialize a lot of the practices that have been established over the last couple of years, along with some new things that we're proposing. It recognizes the fact that student governance and student representation is a priority of the district and also the regional school committee towards the portrait of a graduate idea of civic and socially-minded individuals. Some of the new things that we're proposing is allowing the student representative to cast non-binding votes during meetings of the regional school committee, so it wouldn't affect the outcome of decisions, but it would put the student voice on the record along with the binding votes of the rest of the committee. And it solidifies again a lot of the best practices and stuff that's legally required to happen, like the bi-monthly meetings between representatives of the regional school committee and the student advisory committee. I'm happy to read through everything we wrote, but I don't know if that's fully necessary. It was sent to you guys as well.
Thank you. Questions? I know there was, well, there was a lot there.
Yes.
Besides the, the end, our mind always goes to the end, but the, the other wonderful pieces, like the performances. I think the last time you were performing, were you at the last meeting? Was that the meeting before that you were performing in the musical?
We did Guys and Dolls, yeah. That was back in November that we did Guys and Dolls. So yeah, we were unable to attend that meeting, 'cause we opened the night after the meeting, so it was.
There's been a lot of.
Last grind.
A lot of performances that looked great, so. Questions?
The part about the menstrual products, I love. There's actually a nonprofit in Freeman Hall, Dignity Matters, and they provide, like if you get in touch with them.
We've been in contact with them. There was some degree of, they will provide free products to schools. Where a certain percentage of the student body and their families falls below the poverty line. So they couldn't provide us with completely free products. I think in our initial conversations with them, it would have been, I think, two school years ago, the very end of two school years ago, they offered us some degree of a discount if, after the trial period, which we just completed.
Other questions?
Yes, it's a question. I appreciate, if we go back to the beginning, the mental, the sports mental health event, I, I, I appreciate the fact that I believe it was started or sponsored by a, a, an Algonquin girls. I, I believe it, it was started at the high school. My only question is, and I, I know this isn't our remit, but I wonder, it's more of a wonder. It was not allowed for anyone to participate. It was very closed. It was, it was, it was broadband. But I just wonder whether or not that opportunity should be offered at some point in the future to our middle school areas? Because I think as we kind of progress up, if it was in fact a good event and, and/or if it was a good thing, we probably should consider to promoting that sort of mental health awareness down at the lower levels. So I realize it's not a remit, but I think some, some event like this should be considered. That's my only.
So I can respond to that just quickly. It was open to all students? It was?
It was, but it wasn't in person.
I'm sorry, it wasn't?
It wasn't allowed in person. So like, I couldn't have attended with my daughter.
Right, parents, right. And that was, that's a, yes, I understand your point. So all students could attend, but parents could not attend the student session because the panel was being, you know, students were sharing their own personal experience. And then, and I, I agree with you on your larger point, which is how do we get this kind of programming out to the larger student body? This was, I think, a first opportunity that worked really well, and we're excited about it.
Yeah, no, I, I, I have no critiques about the offering. It's just, I wonder how we can consider to think about.
How do we expand it?
How do we keep, keep it moving now?
I totally agree.
That's all.
A question?
Piece we will take to, or Paul?
Is that a question about the Gonkplex and the student feedback on that, which, I think it's a simple answer. I mean, like, as you, as you said, it's just a question of operational budget versus long-term capital. But I, I know some of those sports marketing classes, Mr. Bevan, are working on that. And I don't know if, how much insight you have into where they are, but.
Yeah, they, they're, they've started to produce some images, and I've given them some feedback. And Mr. Cahill has been working with them, and I think they have some, some materials that we can start sharing very, very soon. He was telling me yesterday that they're pretty close to being able to produce some social media campaign materials.
Okay.
I think it's primarily an issue of kind of communication and laps thereof of exactly, you know, like, you guys are all very in tune, and I am probably one of the only students who's in tune of kind of the difference between, you know, there's not just one credit card for the whole district. It comes out of different systems, and I think some sort of.
There are no credit cards.
I, I guess too, that's simple enough to put that on our F A Q for one thing, but you know, if it's something that the marketing, the sports marketing folk could address, then I would appreciate it.
Yes. And if we can find our social media channels that we think students are most attracted to and maybe move some of their, the points you're making, Ben, to the top of that and get that out on the channels where we think students are gonna absorb it most readily, I think that would probably be the best, best course of action. Would that work with the mascot review when we kept answering the same questions? We took about four or five of them and really surfaced them in a way that was very public.
I was just gonna add that Mr. Martino happened, and I happened to be at one of the class meetings and got to hear the student response when the price tag was nuts. And I also, it occurred to me that in addition to not understanding kind of the funding sources and all of that, you did mention about, in the video, about the timeline of, you know, how the funding works. But they have no reference point of, you know, like what did it cost when we, you know, did the work on this building and things like that? So they, there's no reference point of like 7.5 million compared to what?
Yeah.
So that, I think, could be an interesting piece of it as well.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of room for, and it was like the very first kind of widespread introduction to the student body at the class meetings that happened earlier this week. And I think there's just room now to continue to build on that.
Sure.
And further the kind of information about where the money comes from, how it works, and then more as well as exactly what comes out of the project, and that there's community use to it as well, and it's not just for the sports teams and such.
Thank you, Ben.
And then the, the policy piece, I think there was a, was there a discussion of that this morning at the?
We had a lengthy, lengthy.
We met for about two hours this morning.
Yeah. I, I think.
Yeah, so Kathy Key and Kathleen Polacko represented the school committee and did meet with the students to talk about their agenda for kind of moving this and memorializing student government. So I think we had a great conversation. I think where we left it is, Mr. Shanzar would present the information this evening, put it back in the hands of the school committee, and the school committee, I think, can then charge the policy subcommittee to take this on and, and really look at it closely.
Is that a recommendation or a vote?
I think it's a recommendation, if it's the will of the committee.
It, it seems to make sense to take it to the policy subcommittee to really dig into that and, and look at it.
Yeah, I'm just always a fan from student voice, so thank you.
Yeah, and I think that.
Martino knows that. And yeah, so the more opportunity, the better, so I would support this. And us moving that recommendation forward. And I also just wanted to say that that woman who came out for Bread Night, I don't know if you all know, but she was just on Chronicle, which I just happened to see, which was pretty cool. And she told her own journey of mental, her mental health struggles through college. And so I recognized her, which was so cool.
And I don't know if it was said, I don't, maybe you said this, Ben, she's an Algonquin graduate.
I do not know that.
And she was one of my former students, so she's very proud of Dana.
Principal Bevan takes full credit.
I wish I could. She's a wonderful young woman, and we're very proud of her.
One thing I would like to say to Ms. Ari's point is that, like, this policy is being introduced in a time when we have like a very receptive to the student voice administration and school committee. And like, I'm, we're super grateful that that exists. And what this is kind of taking is a lot of the best practices that we're kind of working to establish and really making sure that they're in one place. So five, 10, 20 years down the road, future students, future administrations, future school committees can refer to this. And it's in like a very concrete, codified is the word we kept using this morning, place, that is the policy manual.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, thank you.
And then kind of one last little thing is, is there anything that the student advisory committee can bring to the regional school committee when we report next? Other than kind of the same as what I just did? Yes.
I happened to be in a classroom today as a guest, and what I found was as Mary Ellen and I and the committee are looking at all of these numbers from the Metro West Adolescent Mental Health Survey, and then looking at what the C D C has just reported, I'd really be interested in what the students have to say. I asked a lot of those kind of questions, 'cause that's what I'm interested in, and that's why I ran in the first place, and, and it was consistent with why I was invited in. But the story, their stories, their thoughts on it, I think are the stories that we need to illuminate the numbers that we get in the survey. What I heard today was just so precious and important to me, but it was just one class and one sampling.
So maybe some student testimonials regarding their own experiences?
So just in terms of, we do have plans to share the Metro West adolescent youth survey data with all committees at the combined meeting. So Mary Ellen Duggan and Jennifer Phillips and O'Connor will be doing a presentation. And I know there's been conversation around how do we incorporate student voice into that presentation? So that is up and coming, and a very timely, important topic. And it's not that we haven't been looking and using the data. I think Principal Bevan and, and the team has. But this will be the, a formal presentation to the committee about patterns and trends we're seeing in terms of student behaviors.
Yeah, I feel that the authenticity is with the children. And it would be my request to have that collaboratively done, please.
We'll reach out to Ms. Duggan.
I can work with the superintendent and Sean to figure out how to, how to funnel that.
Sure.
That our next.
Because their status and their view of resources were, were, were considerations out of today. You know, what their view of resources are. I think so oftentimes we as adults say, this is, this is the thing you all need. And I'm not always convinced that, that we've got it right at the collegiate level or here. And so, you know, I would very much like to see that to be a collaborative approach. you know, I would very much like to see that to be a collaborative approach, uh, because the numbers are just, they continue to decline. I mean, if I were a football-playing kind of person, I'd be throwing down penalty flags everywhere. So, thank you.
Yeah, I'll work with Mr. Bevan and Ms. Duggan and Mr. Martino on how we can incorporate into their, and Mr. Ashay.
Their interpretation of resources available, um, and what they feel their status is and why.
All right.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
This is perfect.
Yeah, I think it's your, um, your report now?
Sure.
I, well, I can give you one suggestion too. So, um, when the meeting, when the meeting calls for a particular department to present, um, it'd be interesting to get like some type of student survey, uh, feedback around the department. I don't know what it may look like. I'll leave that to you, but it'd just be interesting to, to put the two together.
Yeah, we'd have to make sure it's not evaluative, so.
Yeah, I think that, um, we definitely can have Student Voice in the presentations and, and so you get a sense of, um, the, the student perspective. Um, so there are, I'll work with Sean and, um, Sean, um, to make, to think about how we can make that happen. I just want to be careful not to, because it is also evaluative in nature. Um, so the collective bargaining agreement and evaluation could be, we just have to try carefully and think about how to do it so we accomplish the goal we want to accomplish.
I would agree with that so very much, that suggestion, um, and really looking at the ethos in a department. Um, and we always seem to get the top one to five percent of students in these presentations. I really want somebody who's average. I would love to hear from somebody who's struggling. I would love to see the, the normal distribution curve better represented in the presentations.
Thank you. Time to move along.
Uh, so moving on, and I actually think it's a, a good segue from our conversation about mental health supports. And, uh, what I'm sharing tonight is, uh, initially started as, I, I was, um, planning on sharing just, uh, several things that we have developed over the last several months in, uh, in support of students' mental health. And I wanted to use a little bit of our language here in the building to frame up how, uh, why we're, why we're doing those things and how the strategy we're employing to do, to develop, uh, the supports we've developed. They're not just done randomly as you might imagine. Um, so we use, uh, multi-systems, uh, multi-tiered systems of support as a framework for thinking about, um, how do you distribute your resources to tackle very complex issues? Um, and so, uh, I'll go through that very quickly and then overlay the, the changes that we're, uh, developing and employing this year and some for next year. Uh, so, um, in any system, and it might be a classroom, uh, you would have a series of supports that would be available to all students in that. And we're all beneficiaries of that at all times, generally speaking, in a school. In tier two, that, uh, that's where you would identify some individuals in that environment who need a little bit more support, uh, but that not all, all members of that environment need. Um, and so you would target small groups, but you wouldn't have to go to a single individual because that is intensive and resource, um, and requires a great deal of resources. And yet there are some individuals that do need that individualized support. Here at the high school, um, we have strong mental health services and, and supports, um, but we are working this year to really increase the foundational elements of, uh, the, this multi-tiered system of support, especially in tier one and tier two. So tier three and for mental health would be adding staff members that would give the one-to-one kinds of, uh, services that you might think about for men, m- mental health. Today, I'm going to be talking about several things we're doing to really bolster and strengthen and improve the areas of, uh, tier, tier one and tier two support. And these are all, as you've seen this gear before, this is, uh, our, from our, um, portrait of, of a graduate. And this is, falls soundly under our Healthy and Balanced Learners, um, uh, efforts, uh, when we're producing the portrait of a graduate, the outcomes we're looking for, and this is one of them. So under, uh, under the emerging and strengthening systems of tier one and two, new this year, we've, we've put together a few, uh, parent and speaker events. And so kudos to Mary Ellen Duggan for the Raising Resilient Kids, uh, sequence of, of speaker events that happened throughout January. And then we just talked, uh, about the Supporting Athletes Mental Health, uh, event that we just had. Um, and I won't go too much more into that, except that my goal in, in doing that was, well, two things. One was that it came from students' suggestion. Um, and that's always a powerful catalyst for producing a really good outcome. And also, um, the goal was that we are gonna, we were gonna develop something that ha- was a model that we could revisit every year and do something around, uh, mental health every year, perhaps just with mental, with athletes, uh, but maybe we, we broaden it, uh, per, uh, John's suggestion. So, uh, that's, that's, um, one example of a tier one support that all, you know, all, all members of that community could, could attend. Uh, the mental health, I think it's Advocacy Club. I think I actually, I apologize. I think, um, it's Mental Health Advocacy Club you just heard a little bit about. So we won't go too much more into that, but that is open to all students and, um, they do programming and, and awareness, uh, through that club. And then additionally, and this is exciting and quietly kind of building around the, uh, around the school is that we, of course, everyone knows we have one full-time uh, therapy dog. That's Parker, who lives here in the library, doesn't live here in the library, but during the school day, he spends his time here in the library. Um, and nine of our staff members in a PD session in November began the process of having their own dogs, therapy dog-trained. Um, and over the course of the last several months, at different rates, they achieved the full certification. And so now six of them have their dogs trained and they bring them in in a way that's coordinated. So we don't have six dogs in the, in the building at any given time. But, um, in any given part of the building, we may have one therapy dog in a classroom where there was none before. So that's an example where, um, that, that impacts and helps all, all students in a very low-level, um, very cost-effective kind of way. And the, the staff love having their dogs here in the building. It's been a success so far. We're gonna monitor it through, uh, term three, take some data, um, and gather information from parents and students to see if it's working and if we need to scale it back or build it up. So that's the kind of tier one support that we're talking about. New also this year and beginning and again also, uh, oh, sorry, John, yeah.
Did the teachers do train the dogs at their personal expense?
I don't know how much.
Yes, yes. The, it was, the pro, the, um, offering, Michelle Karb, who's our principal at Mellican Middle School, oversees the therapy dog program. And she, on her own, is also an instructor of, um, cert- for, and can certify people. She offered her services for no charge in terms of the offering of the program, but individuals paid the cost to the organization that ultimately certifies them. And then they had requirements that went, that was just the beginning, um, that was offered on that PD day. And then they had additional classes they had to take that was outside of the school day and additional costs.
That's wonderful.
Yeah.
Yes, it's been really great.
That's, that's very impressive for those eight individuals to actually just do that. That's really nice.
It's exciting.
Thank you, sorry.
Yes.
And kids love the dogs.
The kids love the dogs, yes, they do. And, um, being mindful that not every student loves being around dogs for a variety of reasons. And some, some of them are related to allergies, some of them are not. And so we've communicated with families and been really proactive to make sure they're aware that this is an initiative and to hear if they have concerns. And that has not emerged yet, but we're certainly trying to find out if that might not be a good fit. And in that case, the students', uh, preferences and priori, their, their health and their, their comfort will prevail. So, um, that's something we, that number, it's currently six. I signed two more forms today. So we had four in in the last couple of weeks. We'll have two more dogs in the coming weeks. And I think, uh, if all goes well, we'll probably be up to eight or nine dogs, uh, on staff by the end of the year. And then a tier two support that we are in development on.
Is that a comment? We, we do not get chapter seventy money for our dogs.
No.
So it's not a budgetary.
It's not, it's.
Too bad we don't, that'd be nice.
It's been high-impact and low, um, low-cost and, and really a fun thing to see here in the building. Um, and in, in the realm of tier two, and to remind you, tier two is that small group kind of, um, um, approach. We are developing small group counseling and that is through, again, also Mary, Mary Ellen Duggan, who's been very, very helpful along with some others to develop, um, small group counseling through the Family Success Partnership to help a small, specific group of students who are spending a lot of the ti- a lot of their time and our resources in that tier three that we talked about. And this will allow us to more effectively meet their needs and then start to transition them back frankly to, to tier one so that they have those skills that they need. And that's really seeing the model work as intended. So the goal is that that, that tier two support will help to, um, expand our capacity here in the building to meet the needs of all students. And then, uh, for next year, we have an exciting program that is already happening at the, at both middle schools. It's the Signs of Suicide Program, uh, and screening. And we will, uh, roll that out for grades nine and eleven. And then that's how it will be, um, presented each year at grade nine and eleven, grade nine, eleven. It's currently happening in grade seven. And so, uh, for a student who comes through our schools, they'll have Signs of Suicide Program in grade seven, nine, and eleven. And, uh, in that way, it's tier one because it's addressing the needs of all students. Suppose one could argue it's not addressing the needs of all students in all times and every year, but, um, tier one and two aren't quite that specific. Um, and then finally, uh, we are initially considering and looking at ways if the small group counseling I discussed, uh, is a success and we anticipate it will be potentially expanding that small group counseling to other topics that we see, uh, as meeting that need for, um, tier two supports. So that shares with you again, uh, just here's that visual I shared, gives you an idea not only of the kind of programming we're using, but the strategy behind how we're developing them and how, uh, currently and going into this year, I think we were a little bit weak in the tier two supports and we're looking to build those up. I think we're particularly strong in tier three and there's always room to grow in tier one. So just finding where you can add, um, it, uh, takes, uh, some time and effort and, um, making sure our resources are being spent, uh, wisely, um, has been the driver.
John, do you mind if I jump in and add one thing just to build off of this? Just to connect back to our last conversation. As we think about the tiers and, um, the question about sort of student voice and, um, what, how do we know what students need? How do we make those decisions? And the concept is that this is all data-driven, right? So that we are using the Metro West Health Survey, we are using our, um, SEL screener, which you have heard about in the past, which we did for the first time last year, to help inform what we need for the larger community and then what we need for different groups of students within. And so the, the SEL screener, which is based on the CASL competencies, also connects to our health curriculum, to workshops that come from the guidance department, which are also all part of tier one, um, and, you know, mental health supports as well.
And that concludes my report. Questions? Yes.
It's, this is probably a silly question, but, um, back in the K eight years, uh, for the students that were struggling for whatever reasons, they had lunch bunches. Do we have lunch bunch at the high school?
Oh, my God. We do not have lunch bunch, but we do, uh, we do have students who prefer not to eat in the lunchroom. It's loud. Um, it's just a lot of stimulation, stimulation for any, for any student and for many students, it's just too much. We've gotten the requests over the years for a quieter space, so we use, we provide my conference room that you've probably all been in one time or another. That's used for any student who just goes in there, would like to go in there. And every day, there's six to eight students. So the goal is not necessarily for them to socialize with each other. That would be great. It just gives them an alternate lunchroom, which is what we call it.
Can I just add quickly to that? Also, I think you, you know, one of the positive outcomes of the pandemic was just giving students more options to eat lunch outside of the caf- cafeteria. So you'll notice that there are picnic tables outside in the, the, um, outside of the rotunda. Kids are eating lunch in the rotunda. So it's a much different atmosphere. And I think students really appreciate it. Like, when you walk through while kids are eating lunch, it's a sense of community. And I, I think many students take advantage of that opportunity as well.
Yeah, that's, uh, that's been a fun, a fun change. Our facility staff, I think we're adjusting to that because students, you know, where they're eating lunch in the rotunda and they, and we, they do a generally pretty good job of cleaning up after themselves. They benefit greatly from that, that different space than just the cafeteria. Other questions?
Generally. Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. So next, under the superintendent's report, um, in your packet is the enrollment report as of January twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Um, and no significant difference from, uh, last month's enrollment. So the enrollment is one thousand two hundred and sixteen students. And our anticipated enrollment for twenty-three, twenty-four is eleven eighty-four. So a difference of thirty-two students. I will share that, um, NESDEC is projecting next year as, um, the valley. Uh, and then over the next five years, we'll start rising again in terms of enrollment.
But this also says it's based on a hundred percent.
Yeah, so what's interesting too is, um, we have seen an increase in trotty or eighth graders enroll as freshmen at Algonquin. Um, I think it's gone from eighty-one percent to, um, mid-nineties over the past two years. Um, and then we continue to see strong enrollment from Mellican Middle School to Algonquin. Um, and that has ranged anywhere between ninety-five and a hundred and five percent, depending on families who move in. So, um, it's actually, we are seeing an increase in enrollment from Trotter and Mellican, eighth grade into Algonquin.
So you feel like that hundred percent number is.
I think it's a more accurate number. So also in your packet is the, um, monthly general fund expenditure report as of January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. So it's hard to believe that we have two-thirds of the fiscal year completed. Um, so as of January thirty-first, um, we had one point nine five percent of, um, balance remaining, five hundred and two thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and sixty-four cents. And just as, as a benchmark, at this time last year, um, we had one point seven nine percent remaining, uh, which totaled three hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars and eight cents. Um, at this time, there are no significant variant, variances and we are trending as, um, expected. And also the finance department has a great job forecasting forward and encumbering the funds for the, the four, the remaining four months. So, um, at this point in time, I'm pleased to report that we're in a good fiscal position in terms of the fiscal year twenty-three budget.
Caught me yawning, sorry. Um, so we need a motion to approve the expenditures report until audited?
So moved?
Paul? Second.
Chris? All in favor?
Passes you here.
All right. So also in your packet is the statement of revenue as of January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Um, just a couple of points. We have received our second quarterly payments of circuit breaker tuition and regional transportation. Um, so those are tracking as expected. Um, we did see an increase in, um, our interest income as a result of increased interest rates. So one of the few positives of increased interest rates. Um, and also, um, we did add our E and D balance to the statement of revenue. Um, Becky and the finance team is working on a balance sheet report that will be presented at future meetings for the school committee that will, uh, encompass a holistic view of our financial position as a regional district. So that is, uh, forthcoming. And, um, I know that was a recommendation of the committee. So, um, either next month or the month after, you should expect that. And also, um, just in terms of, um, certifying E and D. So, um, Sunny Cox, our accountant, is working on certifying E and D and working also with our accounting firm, Tom Scanlon, uh, to make sure that, um, all the audits and, um, data is where it should be in terms of auditing purposes.
Don't they report to us again? I feel like that's in spring.
So they have completed their, um, we should be getting the final reports from our auditors in the next few weeks. And, um, we do have an audit subcommittee, so we'll convene that and then present it at either the, um, March or April meeting.
Okay. So we need to, um, vote to accept the statement of revenue pending audit?
So moved?
Hello?
Second.
Chris again. Perfect. All in Chris. Okay, all in favor? Passes unanimously.
So just a quick update on our other post-employment benefits. So again, we have established an OPEB trust account, which was two years ago. At this point in time, the fund balance is two hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-seven cents. We have a balanced investment strategy. I think the Committee voted to take a more conservative approach, and we are seeing fluctuations to the volatility of the stock market at this point in time. And I think that we are planning to invest twenty-five thousand dollars in FY twenty-three into that OPEB trust. The account is willfully underfunded. We need to, at some point, as a regional school committee, have a strategy session around how to make up the OPEB liability. But I will share that in terms of an accounting perspective and an auditing perspective, what they're looking for is even small investments to try to make up that long-term liability. So twenty-five thousand dollars is better than zero, but I think at some point, we'll have to look at a longer-term strategy to make sure that we're meeting the liability that exists.
Do you guys, Christine, meet with the financial advisors, just have discussion on, do we change strategies? Do we, do we, are there suggestions for us?
Yeah, so we do, part of the quarterly reports that we receive, we do have conversations with our OPEB trust folks, but I think at this point in time, there's no change in strategy that they're recommending. So also in your packet are the FY twenty-four budget priorities, and I will speak to those in more detail in the budget presentation. You also have the FY twenty-four through FY twenty-eight capital plan, FY twenty-four budget calendar, which again, I will speak to in the budget presentation, and at this point...
May I ask a question? Just, sorry, it took me a second to think about this. The thing that I can't really comprehend is how, if we, if such an unfunded liability, how we can actually have an excess and deficiency that's positive? Which then gets me back to, I think, the last time we talked, that ultimately, the OPEB or the pension and the benefit that we have to pay is in our operating budget. So I do wonder, like, I understand why you'd want to have a funded liability, but at the same time, if the towns are going to fund the budget every year to meet the needs of, you know, what our cash requirements are, what is the benefit to actually pre-funding it?
So it's, it's underfunded, and it remains a liability of the town. So I think if we look at the liability, I think that we need to, it's basically...
Or said differently, the only source of cash is the budget.
Correct.
So you'd be asking for more money to fund this.
Correct.
And you have to increase the budget.
Correct. The only way to fund this is to try to create other revenue sources, whatever those might be, renting more of the facility, or trying to create some other revenue generation, or through the appropriated budget. So if you look at the appropriated town budget in both Northborough and Southborough, you'll see a line item that is OPEB. They also have a liability that comes out of their appropriated budget each year. So we are no different. We are a regional entity like a town, and the place it would come is from our appropriated budget, which, there's no, there's no...
Well, my view is if the town's not concerned about it, then we shouldn't be, because they have to fund it. If this stopped to exist, which we know it won't, the town would have to fund it.
Correct.
So it's, it's not really our concern.
The main concern for us is to make sure we're making some concerted effort for borrowing purposes and for creditors.
Correct, our bond ratings, you know, our overall financial position, our audits. OPEB does factor into our fiscal position.
Fair enough.
But I agree with you.
No, having that other context of what, what impact it has, okay, I didn't fully appreciate that, so thank you.
All right, so I will provide the recommended budget presentation.
What you got?
I highly recommend eating during this meeting. If you have a snack, now is a great time.
I'm ready for sweets. Do we have a cake at this meeting?
And next year.
Oh, Christine used to bring cake.
Yes. So this evening, I'm pleased to present to the Regional School Committee the FY twenty-four recommended budget. And I do apologize to the Committee, you have heard this presentation many times, but for the purpose of communicating this out to the community, I'm going to go through the entire presentation. So in terms of our work as a district, so although the budget process is a very important aspect of the work we do, and we are really a mission and vision-driven organization. So our mission is educate, inspire, and challenge all students. Although it's very brief, it's also very ambitious, and we focus on making sure all students receive an outstanding education. In terms of our vision, so we spend a lot of time thinking about how we want to prepare students to exit Algonquin Regional High School through the work of the Portrait of the Graduate. We really talked about trying to ensure that students are collaborators, critical creative thinkers, strong communicators, socially and civically engaged, just modeled by them this evening, growth-oriented, and then healthy and balanced. In terms of the budget process, so the budget process begins early on in September and incorporates a lot of collaboration, conversation, and dialogue between the Algonquin leadership team, the central office, educators, the School Committee, and the community. At this point in time, it does feel good crossing off events, and as you can see this evening, we are presenting the recommended budget as of Wednesday, February fifteenth. And I think the next few milestones is obviously this evening, hopefully a vote with the School Committee. We have been meeting with town boards and committees. We have one more board to meet with, and that is in Northborough, the Northborough Appropriations Committee, which will meet on Wednesday, February twenty-second, so next week. Once that meeting has concluded, we have presented to all boards and committees across both communities. And then March and April, so we'll hold our public hearing at the Committee's March fifteenth meeting, and then the key dates are the Southborough Town Meeting, Saturday, March twenty-fifth, and the Northborough Town Meeting, which is Monday, April twenty-fourth. In terms of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget, so when we began in September, there are a lot of unknowns in terms of moving forward with the fiscal year budget. I'm pleased to share that many of these items are now known. And the two areas where we're still trying to get more data and more information are collective bargaining colas, so we are in negotiations with our Unit A and Unit C Teachers' Association, and we hope to wrap that up shortly. And lastly, health insurance rates. At this point in time, we are working with our healthcare consultant to get a sense of what the health insurance rates will be for fiscal year twenty-four. We have not received a final number, and it was shared with us that we can anticipate anywhere between a five to ten percent increase in healthcare costs. So in this budget that we're presenting this evening, we do have a seven percent increase in terms of healthcare as a baseline to work from. In terms of the budget goals and priorities, so as you know, the School Committee does spend a significant amount of time talking about its budget priorities that are aligned with the district's strategic plan. So these are very important guideposts for us as we move through the budget process, as these budget priorities help us make decisions around what to move forward with, what to fund or what not to fund in terms of those limited resources. I will not read through these, as you are very familiar with these, but they are very helpful in terms of the overall budget process. And I will highlight number five. So also, part of the work that we do is work very closely in looking at our strategic plan, Vision Twenty Twenty-Six, and making sure our budget is aligned with our five strategic objectives. And this year, the School Committee did add an item to number five, which is seek capital funding from the towns of Northborough and Southborough to fund the Algonquin Regional High School athletic complex project. So again, I know there's been some conversations around how that project gets funded. I will share that it has been since two thousand and four where the regional district has actually asked the community for capital funds to fund any project. In two thousand and four, the voters did approve sixty million dollars' worth of debt to upgrade Algonquin Regional High School. That capital debt actually falls off in twenty twenty-seven, and we're trying to time the athletic complex project to actually hit the taxpayer in twenty twenty-seven when the debt falls off. I'll speak more to that when I present the athletic complex project. So where we are in terms of the process, so the principals and directors submitted budget requests to the Finance Team at the end of October. Aggregating all of those budget requests, that budget came in at twenty-eight million, thirty-four thousand, eleven dollars, which represented a little under nine percent increase over fiscal year twenty-three. A lot of the requests that the principals and the leadership team asked for, were really thinking about visioning, you know, what would we like to accomplish if money were not a factor, if we could ask for, you know, double-digit budget increases. So that's what that budget reflects. After a lot of conversations and discussions, the leadership team did bring in a preliminary budget that represented a five-point, five-seven increase over fiscal year twenty-three. And as you can see, the budget process moved forward. Primarily, the changes occurred because we had better data and more information, for example, about retirements. Certain costs were more known as we moved through this budget process. And this evening, I'm presenting to the School Committee a recommended budget of twenty-six million, five hundred and ninety thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars, which represents a three-point-three-six percent increase over fiscal year twenty-three. So in terms of the process from preliminary to revised preliminary to recommended, you'll see that some of the items remain constant from the preliminary to recommended, and some have changed. For example, student staff devices, we still are purchasing student staff devices. However, we're shifting that purchase to S R three. So we have until the end of fiscal year twenty-four to use S R three funds. We've been very conservative of how we expend those funds, because what was unknown was the fiscal year twenty-four budget climate. So this is one area where we can actually provide some relief to the budget and shift that to S R. The Worcester Regional Retirement System, so we're seeing a ninety-three thousand, thirty-four dollar increase. Special education out of district transportation, so we are seeing the impact of fuel escalation and cost for transportation for special education. Becky and the Student Support Services Team has worked very closely to fine-tune this number, and at this point, it's a little under one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We are seeing an increase in utilities and electricity and heating, so that number has remained constant, so it's a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar increase over fiscal year twenty-three. Insurances, so health liability and workers' comp is a little over three hundred and thirty thousand dollars increases. And then in terms of salary increases and colas, so this is the work we're doing in terms of collective bargaining, represents a little over, a little under five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So the total budget drivers for fiscal year twenty-four totals one million, two hundred and fifty-one thousand, one hundred, three hundred and sixty-one dollars. In terms of budget reductions, so from the preliminary to the recommended, so FY twenty-three and FY twenty-four, circuit breaker tuition reimbursement. So the Finance Team did look at forecasting special education out of district tuitions, and as a result, we feel we can apply some FY twenty-four circuit breaker to the FY twenty-four budget, so that is a one million, one hundred and four thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollar offset. FY twenty-three circuit breaker transportation reimbursement, so this is part of the Student Opportunity Act, and now having special education out of district transportation be circuit breaker eligible, so that is twenty thousand dollars. Retirements and leaves of absences, so we have a better number, a better idea of folks who are taking a leave of absence or who may be retiring, so we've captured that as a reduction. Salary increases in colas, fifty thousand dollar reduction. Special education adjustments, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And this primarily is the forecasting that we were doing around looking at out-of-district tuitions. S R three, so again, we've been very conservative in how we expand S R three, so we have not expanded S R three in fiscal year twenty-three, and we are going to relieve the FY twenty-four budget with S R three totaling one hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars. And then revolving accounts, so we have money sitting in lost textbooks and transcripts, and we're going to put that to good use and reduce this budget by twenty-one thousand, seven hundred dollars. So the total budget reductions in the recommended budget is one million, six hundred and five thousand, two dollars. So what are the impact of the reductions in the FY twenty-four budget? So first, utilization of FY twenty-four circuit breaker funds may impact FY twenty-five's special education budget. So the Finance Department did do a forward-looking trend in terms of out-of-district special education. However, if there is a student who moves in our district who requires out-of-district services, potentially that can be impacted by us using FY twenty-four circuit breaker funds in FY twenty-four, because typically, we use it for appreciating fiscal budget process. And then lastly, we will have to amend our S R three. We did have to get that approved, and we are making some slight adjustments to how S R three is being funded. We are also trying to be very careful not to create a structural deficit in using S R three funds to fund people, but rather things that we need, so that, again, it doesn't create structural deficit in FY twenty-five. So some of the requested positions that are not in the budget, so again, some of the visioning work that the high school leadership team and the district leadership team did in terms of asking and making requests. So OG reading tutor, so the Student Support Services Department does have a plan to provide OG reading tutor supports for students. This is point two, FT adaptive physical education teachers shared across pre-K through eighth Northborough and Southborough, so the regions portion is point zero six. Team chairperson, a library ESP, human resources generalist, which is shared between pre-K through eighth Northborough and Southborough, and far city assistant coaches. The total is two point four six positions. These positions did not make it into the FY twenty-four budget at this time. We do have plans to fund that. We do have plans to fund Point II FTE adaptive physical education teacher. It's not a significant amount. We have alternative funding sources to make that happen, and again, the reading tutor, we have plans to use existing resources to make that happen. Included in the budget, so I think the elimination of student activity fee, so in FY '24, the budget does not rely on student activity fees to balance the budget. So the fee of $50 that students have been experiencing over many years will be, will be gone, will be eliminated, which I think is great work of the regional school committee. In this budget is a position of internship externship coordinator, a person whose sole responsibility will be to look for those partnerships with surrounding businesses to try to get students out in the workforce. We are geographically located in an outstanding location. We have high tech, we have medical, we have pharmaceutical, and we really are going to have one person focus on making those connections, providing those internships and externships for students, so that they get real-world experience. So we're very excited about this position. I will also note that this also will benefit the CAP program that we have. This person will also support students in the 18 to 22 post-grad program that we have, and also increase opportunities for students in that program as well.
Greg, are you taking questions?
Yes.
So when are students, would they be able to do internships and externships?
Yeah, so I think that's part of the structure that this person will be responsible for sorting out and working on, so working with Principal Bevan and the leadership team, thinking about, you know, what does it look like, how does it fit in a schedule. I think our seniors, for example, there's a lot of opportunity for seniors to structure their schedules in a way that would allow them to have this internship experience in high tech. So I think it's, we don't have all the answers. This person's role will be to try to find those answers and work collaboratively with the leadership team to create structures and supports for this to happen more frequently.
And who does this person report to?
Principal Bevan.
Well, everyone reports.
Yes. So.
So about through guidance, it goes.
So it will be a partnership with guidance, but primarily with Principal Bevan and the assistant principals and the guidance, that's where the person will center his or her work So also in the budget is some money to support the purchase of textbooks. So we have online textbook, world language textbooks, also fine arts transportation for experience around fine arts program, and then AP human geography textbooks. So the instructional material supports the position total $168,916.
Sorry. Ben made a comment that some of the observations about the Gompins was, why aren't we spending more on textbooks? It seems like we're doing fine there.
Yes.
Can you give some context to that comment?
Sure. So the high school does have a five-year textbook replacement cycle. So the department, the leadership team, department chairs identify what their needs are in terms of textbook replacement, and we cycle through those replacements. I think that we do have a pretty robust replacement of instructional materials. And I think pandemic, it was interrupted a bit, and I think Principal Bevan has, is getting us back on track, working with the leadership team.
Thanks.
So just instructional materials that were moved from budget onto SOR III. And again, we have to expend SOR III by the end of fiscal year 24. So students and staff devices, we heard from Roto Lab this evening, so some of our translation service costs will be moved to SOR III. And then tutor salary, so part of the expectation for the use of SOR III funds is to help mitigate any learning loss as a result of the pandemic. So we're required to provide a portion of this for that learning loss, so we are having a portion of a tutor salary in SOR III. And again, that totals a little over $163,000. And then move from the budget onto revolving accounts, and this speaks to having a balance sheet where you can see all of the accounts that we have from a holistic perspective. We are, we have some money in our revolving accounts where we will be purchasing AP biology textbooks, rather than having that money sit in that revolving account, we're going to put it to good use. And then we also, we also are going to be using the revolving account to fund a portion of our guidance information system, which is NAVYOS. So from those revolving accounts on this budget, the revolving accounts will fund $21,700 worth of textbooks and computer systems that we were able to relieve that appropriated budget for FY '24. So at this point in time, the budget that I am recommending to you this evening is really a level services budget with a few targeted areas. The total FY '24 recommended budget is $26,593,46, which is a increase over FY '23, $863,265, which is a 3.36% increase over fiscal year 23. And before I go into the apportionment, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I have a question about the SOR III funds that have to be spent by the end of the fiscal year, which you have devices put in there. And so can you talk about the plan for, obviously, you're always going to need devices, and how we're going to budget for that in the future?
Yeah, so we do have a hardware replacement plan that was, is developed by our Director of Information Technology and Julie Doyle, our Director of Instruction Technology. So this, this plan uses SOR III funds for one year in fiscal year 25. We will need to put that money back in to the budget to fund our hardware replacement cycle.
Right. So is it about the same amount every year?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right.
Do middle school students, are they one-to-one?
Yes.
Provided, so, but those different districts, so those, they're on a different, those, those machines won't transfer with them to?
Yeah, so this budget actually moves, so right now, it's bring your own device. So as we, Ben spoke to many of the challenges that we're facing, so some of the challenges that we're facing is when you have students bring their own devices, you don't always know what is on those devices, so it poses a real challenge. We are moving to a district-issued device, and that is our goal, is to make sure that all students are issued devices moving forward. And we have a multi-year plan to accomplish that. So the incoming freshmen will actually be provided a device, a district-issued device that they will use for their learning here at Algonquin Regional High School. It will take us several years to get to that point, but we think it's important in terms of just security, maintaining our network, and reducing the complexity that our IT team has to face as a result of 1,500 students bringing in their devices every day, multiple devices every day.
Will students be required to use the district-issued?
Correct.
I can envision that being deeply unpopular.
Yeah, I think also.
I mean, I would say many districts. The reason I asked about the middle school and the high schools is because many districts start that much earlier at sixth grade, and that device follows a student for like four years, whatever the replacement cycle is, and then that usually, whatever's in middle school goes to high school and then gets replaced somewhere in there. But because we're separate districts and different funding sources, that really can't flip, I guess, right?
Actually, they return them every year.
They re, um.
So they're not following the student.
They're not, okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, so some of the work that we're hoping to accomplish is that because our eighth graders have experienced being issued a district device when they come to Algonquin, that will feel very similar to them, familiar to them. Also, at the eighth grade parent night, I believe Principal Bevan did communicate to parents not to go out and purchase a device for the DIYOD program, that we will be issuing a device to students. So we've tried to be proactive in our communication.
You had said for use here at Algonquin, but I don't presume that you mean restricted to the building, but they can go back and forth to home if they need to.
Correct. The device that they're issued, their freshman year, will stay with them for their four years at Algonquin. So we will not be, you know, we will not be collecting them.
No, but it can go back and forth to home.
Yes.
It's not restricted to use in the building.
Correct.
Just wanted to, it's just a preposition away from.
Yes.
Understanding, okay.
I think overall 3.3-ish is very remarkable considering where inflation is just at stake, so.
Yeah, I think we are, the beneficiary is declining enrollment. So I think, you know, we have not reduced staff and resources to our students. I think it's been the philosophy of the school committee for the past several years where we've seen decreased enrollment to maintain the same level of staff. Again, I think smaller class size, better connections with educators and students all benefit students' experience here at Algonquin. So this budget continues that philosophy. But if you look at our budget increase, it is primarily increases to cost of people between COLA, healthcare increases, retirement, you're looking at of the $860,000, a majority of it was just for the people, to support the people. So in terms of what does this budget, this 3.36 aggregate budget, what impact does it have in terms of each community? So I'll just walk you through the statutory distribution of the budget and then the regional apportionment. So one important note is there are a lot of unknowns in this budget that I'm presenting at this point in time, because we do not have the governor's budget, which includes the Chapter 78, so how much money we're getting from the state in terms of per pupil expenditure. We do not know at this point regional transportation reimbursement. We do not know circuit breaker reimbursement. So we are using FY '23 numbers in this budget as our projection. And typically, we look back five years, and I think we are comfortable using these numbers. We're hoping that the governor's budget actually increases this number and actually provides us with additional money for the FY '24 budget. So we have Chapter 78, regional transportation revenues. We sum that and then subtract it from the total budget recommended, and that is the budget after offsets. We are also waiting for minimum local contribution numbers from the state. So there are six factors that go into minimum local contribution. It is a complex formula, and we do not know that number at this point in time. So we are using FY '23 MLC numbers for this budget. So for North Row, it's a little over $8 million, and for South Row, it's a little over $5.1 million. So we subtract MLCs from the budget after offsets, and that provides us with an FY '24 budget after required contributions. And this is where the regional agreement comes into place. This remaining amount gets a portion by enrollment. So the North Row enrollment as of October 1 is 61.22%, and South Row portion of enrollment is 38.78. So we take the 9, 3, 1, 8, 2, 5, 6, and 61.22% of that for North Row is a little over $5.7 million. For South Row, it's a little over $6 million. Then we're using FY '23 minimum local contribution, and that provides us with the recommended budget non-exempt assessment calculation. So in North Row, it is $13,776,552. In South Row, it's $8,748,193. And the difference between fiscal year 23 and fiscal year 24, for North Row, it's $943,445, and for South Row, it's $579,810. So the impact to the North Row apportionment is 7.35%, and the South Row, it's 7.10%. So this is the first year in many years that we actually have parity in percent increase between the budgets. Over the past several years, we've had North Row have a zero, South Row have 9%. And the year before that, we had North Row have a 10% increase, and South Row have a, you know, experiences a negative 2% decrease in the budget. So this is, this just speaks to the stability of enrollment at this point in time. So I think the, it's a significant impact on the overall town budgets. So one way we can mitigate the overall impact is, again, to apply excess deficiency, and E and D, again, reduces the burden to the taxpayer. So if the school committee applies $675,000 of E and D, North Row's portion or percent increase, or portion is $530,220, or is a 4.13% increase. South Row, we would apply $318,45, and that, South Row's portion is 3.89%. If the school committee approves the use of $675,000 of E and D, the E and D balance for fiscal year 25 will be within the school committee's excess deficiency policy of 3.25 to 3.75%, which would again allow for any significant increases in the apportionment next year as well. So in summary, I think this is a budget that supports the growth of Algonquin Regional High School. I think, although it's a level services budget, we have a high level of service that we provide to our students, and this maintains that level of service. And then there are growth areas and targeted areas such as technology, instructional materials, and adding some resources in terms of internship.
Can I ask a question? Can you go to the E and D page? I'm just, um, with $675,000. Do those two numbers need to add to $675,000? Five, five thirty, three eighteen?
Eight twenty-eight. Are they showing us?
Okay.
They're a bit higher.
I was going to ask maybe similar, I don't know if it, is where the $675 gets back into the budget, like if you went back, does it end up becoming like a revenue source similar to the state fund, so that when it comes down through the waterfall calculation, it comes out?
Yes, it actually.
Because I think at 530 and the 318, I think what that is showing, I believe, is the, what the increase would be to North Row and the increase to South Row after application of the $675.
So these, this row right here.
Got it.
Is this number.
Yes.
Subtract 61.22%.
Got it.
Of $675.
Yep.
The budgetary impact to North Row's $530,000.
Perfect.
Which is 4.13%. Thank you.
Thank you.
Where's Becky?
Questions from the committee? We do need to, so vote on the budget, and then if we so choose to vote on applying E and D to the budget separately.
I have a question. I have a question. So Greg, none of this budget process that we're looking at tonight is necessarily, um, faculty expenses, is that right? We're looking at outside, I mean, it is all incorporated, but specifically, and of course, my interest is, are we losing anybody?
No. So this, this support, this is a level services budget. We are, um, not losing any positions. Um, and it's actually at one, a net, net of one, the internship, extra.
Or time in positions?
Any other discussion, questions, concerns?
I guess, Greg, I have a question. I don't know if you'll be able to answer it, and that is, given the current trend in our budget this year, how much out of this year's budget are we likely going to deposit into the E and D account?
So we, um, we are, we are trending, um, positively at this point in time, and we do anticipate that we'll be able to, um, deposit, with end of year funds, an amount that brings us above the three point seven-five percent.
Above the three seven-five?
Correct. Any's early. Um, I think the finance department has done a nice job encumbering when you look at the bottom line balance of the budget as of January thirty-first. That's actually a pretty good indication of where we are fiscally. Um, and we should see consistency from, from February all the way through June, barring no, um, unforeseen expenses.
So we, if we vote this tonight, we, i- 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 uh, then it goes to, uh, the warrant. But then if some of those, the, the governor's budget, just for clarity purpose, um, governor's budget comes in higher, it all gets reduced, we don't revote?
So we will.
We'd be updated.
You, so, so I think it's important to, um, make a decision around this recommended budget. We will get more information around the governor's budget, um, the end of this month. The school committee will most likely, unless our numbers are exactly the same, without it, um, will have to revote, um, the budget, um, moving forward.
Yeah.
But in terms of public hearing and all the work we need to do to get prepared for a town meeting, we do need, um, a vote. And more work to be done in the future from the committee.
Right. And my question obviously would be, we vote this tonight, I mean, it's obviously, it's supposed to not go up. It can only go down with the governor's budget and that p- potential fourteen percent increase that's still out there in the special education outplacements, um.
So that is factored in this budget?
It is.
So we, we factored in a fourteen percent increase out of district tuition. That is part of the three point three-six percent increase.
Okay.
So, I suspect any favorability from the governor's budget will just be applied to that first list that you've put up there of the things that got caught.
Exactly. It will allow us to have more conversations around the things that didn't make it into this budget.
Right.
The, from the wish list. They're not cut, cuts, just to clarify. Right. They're, yeah.
Correct. They were cut from the wish list.
Right.
Paul?
I'll make a motion if we're ready. Uh, do we vote to approve the recommended fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget of twenty-six million, five hundred and ninety thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars?
We have a motion from Paul.
Second.
Second from John. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor? It passes unanimously. Um, so that brings us to the, uh, not open, the E and D discussion. And the recommendation of using, um, six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to apply towards that budget. Paul?
I'll move that we, uh, approve the, uh, six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars applied from E and D to the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget.
We have a motion by Paul.
Second.
And second by Matthew. All in favor? It passes.
All right. Congratulations. And again, kudos to the finance department. We're very fortunate. We have a strong LP finance department. She does an outstanding job, and, um, she was unable to make it this evening.
Just gonna say, like, where is she? This is like exciting.
I'm sure she wishes she could be.
One more presentation?
Yes, and I apologize, but one more presentation.
These chairs is very comfortable in here.
She's enjoying them.
I really am, actually. Are those new? They look new.
They were reupholstered.
They are, reupholstered.
Oh, I like them.
This is yours.
So usually Mr. Lavoy is giving this presentation, but I decided to give him the night off. So he'll be on standby to answer any, um, detailed questions. So this evening, we're presenting the, um, status of the Algonquin Athletic Complex. Um, we do feel that this is a community investment. Not only will it benefit our student athletes, our students, but also the communities of Northborough, Southborough. So why are we moving forward with this project? So I think that the district has, um, gotten great value over its current athletic complex. Um, it's well beyond its useful life and needs to be upgraded and replaced. And also, there are some health and safety reasons why it needs to be upgraded. Um, so in terms of the stadium field, uh, the stadium, uh, was not renovated with the school in two thousand and four. Um, only the field was, uh, top dressed and overseeded. Um, we are seeing high levels of soil action as a result of overuse. And then we're not able to rest our fields as we should, um, because of lack of playing fields, um, that we have currently. Um, the track was reconstructed in nineteen ninety-four. Um, we've done, uh, maintenance and repairs over the years. But you'll see that there's heavy patching and puddling as evidenced in the pictures. Um, and does not meet, uh, MIAA standards for hosting track meets. Um, and it does pose a safety, um, risk for our student athletes and anyone who uses the track. The tennis courts were, uh, installed in two thousand and four. Um, you'll see that there's significant cracking, and we have done some repair over the years, um, but the base layer is, is, has failed. Um, and we cannot patch effectively moving forward, um, and they need to be replaced. Um, and again, with a multi-purpose field, um, soil is heavily impacted. We aren't able to rest our fields as we would like to. Um, in addition of a multi-purpose field would increase access to, um, fields for all athletes and community organizations, um, youth sports, um, recreation, and so forth. In terms of health and safety, um, so our grandstands are not ADA compliant. Our amenities building, uh, restrooms are not ADA compliant, um, so, um, there are some health and safety concerns and accessibility concerns, um, bringing this project forward would mitigate. And then lastly, lighting is insufficient, so, uh, lighting is, um, original to mid-nineties. Um, and it does pose a safety issue. Um, it just no longer meets the standard of lighting, um, in the year two thousand and twenty, right? So the plan, um, so the plan proposes to replace the track. Stadium field with turf, um, also a multi-purpose field with turf. Um, upgrade the grandstand to make it ADA compliant with seating. Um, also, um, create a press box that is ADA compliant. Um, upgrade the stadium lights with LED lights and upgrade the tennis courts. We also, um, plan on renovating the amenities building so that we are ADA compliant in terms of the number of re- of restrooms that we're required to have. And also upgrades, um, adding amphitheater, um, for our community and school performances, and also a lacrosse wall. So this is probably a very familiar picture, um, to all of you, but you can see, uh, from this rendering, we have the upgraded track, um, we have the stadium and new press box. To your east, we have the multi-purpose, uh, field, uh, with lighting, um, the amenities building. So that, again, that interior would be upgraded with, um, restrooms to meet ADA compliance. We also have the, uh, amphitheater, um, as in addition to this project. And to the northwest, we have a lacrosse wall. We are also upgrading the tennis courts. Um, there has been a slight design change from the last time this was presented. And we had conversations with, um, some community folks and students around adding a basketball court and pickleball courts. And in addition to the price tag being a reaction of students, pickleball courts was another big reason why.
A big reaction.
Excited. So, um, what we plan on doing is taking two of the existing tennis courts, so going from nine to seven, and using, uh, creating a basketball court for our students and three pickleball courts. Um, and this will benefit not only, um, the tennis program, but our PE program moving forward. This is also a rendering of the amenities building. Um, one significant change in addition to making sure it's ADA compliant, we have the number of facilities required, is that currently the window faces, um, opposite of the football field, uh, for the concession. So this actually repurposes, um, and realigns the concession to actually face the current stadium field with the grandstands. So it just makes it more useful, um, and accessible for people. And then lastly, um, and then the addition of the amphitheater, um, again, um, working closely with Amy Collins and thinking about community events, you know, how can we not only make this a recreational area for, um, for our student athletes, our students, and our community, but also how can we make it a space where people gather, um, can enjoy performances, um, and engage in concerts? And also a place for teachers to use, to have an outdoor classroom space, um, if they choose. So who benefits? So, um, we think Algonquin Regional High School student athletes. Having modern facilities, again, our facilities are, um, in, you know, have been, um, a great investment for the community, but they are beyond repair, need to be updated. I think increased field access, so we're going to be able to increase the use of our field three times by having a multi-purpose turf field. It will allow us to extend our seasons. Our Algonquin Communal High School students, um, physical education classes will benefit, so all students using the track, using the field, using the pickleball court, tennis courts. I think this is an enhancement, um, to our PE, uh, experience. Residents, so residents will have access to the track, um, the tennis and pickleball and basketball courts. We think it's a benefit for our performing artists, musicians, community groups, um, Northborough, Southborough Recreation. And lastly, we will be able to provide more access to Northborough, Southborough youth sports due to the fact that we can, we don't have to worry about resting our fields, uh, because they will be turf. So, um, where are we in terms of overall cost for this project? So we were, we are at a hundred percent cost estimate at this point in time. Uh, we've worked very closely with Gail Associates to get an idea of what this overall project will cost. Um, so as you can see, um, with twelve percent contingency, um, subtotal for this project is seven million, seven hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. Also added to this cost is the, um, building design and construction period services, which are required to kind of implement this project. So at this point in time, the total, um, cost is seven million, nine hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars. So in terms of, uh, one of the benefits of being a regional community is that the cost gets apportioned to the member communities. So Northborough's portion of the cost of this project is, uh, based on enrollment. Uh, four years of enrollment, and then rule and four will be on a rolling average of the four years. So Northborough's estimated project cost is four million, nine hundred and sixty-one thousand, thirty-three dollars. Southborough's, uh, estimated project cost based on enrollment is two million, nine hundred and ninety thousand, sixty dollars. So, um.
Can I ask just one question on that? Cause you made a comment about your rolling. Does the number change in the future? Or is this a one-time based upon four years of past history?
It cha- it's rolling, so we'll, we'll keep changing. So we'll add a year every year to that four-year rolling average.
Oh, into the future? And then it stops after the four-year and determining what the value, okay. All right.
So in terms of, um, bonding, so one of the challenges, um, is timing capital projects. So, again, the sc- the regional school committee has not gone to either the communities for a capital project since two thousand and four. That was a sixty million dollar capital project. No other, uh, funding requests have been asked of the communities since then. Ideally, what happens is you see one capital project fall off, and then you have another project added or, um, added. So that the impact of multiple capital projects, um, is not felt by the taxpayer. Unfortunately, the timing of this project, um, doesn't line up perfectly with, um, twenty twenty-seven when the renovation debt falls off. However, um, we have worked really closely with our financial planner and bond council to think about how we can time it as closely as possible. Um, so our intention is to, um, is to, um, have bond anticipatory notes. So actually not, um, actually bond until twenty twenty-seven. Um, so what that means is that we will look at our bond bands, will be required to pay interest. Um, and then in twenty twenty-seven, uh, we'll actually have to execute the bonds and assess each community its apportionment. I think this, uh, if, you know, I think this is, um, financially responsible in terms of trying to mitigate the overall impact to the, the taxpayer. In terms of the impact to the average taxpayer, so the average, uh, house in Northborough using a little under six hundred thousand dollars, you can see that, um, there's one year where there is an overlap of the high school debt, um, and the debt assessment from, uh, this proposed project, and that is in twenty twenty-seven. After twenty twenty-seven, when the high school debt assessment for the renovation project in two thousand and four falls off, the average household impact, um, tax impact on an annual basis is seventy-two dollars and fifty-five cents. And to the tax rate, it's thirteen cents. In Southborough, the, um, average, uh, house evaluation is eight hundred and three thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars. Again, in twenty twenty-seven, um, you will see where you, we are carrying the debt assessment from high school renovation project and potentially the debt assessment from this athletic project that peaks at one ninety-five, impacting the taxpayer. But after twenty-seven, um, the average annual impact is eighty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents, or eleven cents to of the tax rate. So where do we, what are the next steps? So, um, I think because the region is its own entity, there are some nuances that are unique to moving capital projects forward. And for, um, many of you, this might be your first capital project at the regional level. So the first thing that is important to note is that, um, next month, at the March fifteenth meeting, the school committee will have to make a, a decision whether it's going to, uh, approve or disapprove moving forward with this project. Um, so the school committee will have to vote. So the school committee will have to vote to incur a debt of a little under eight hundred million dol, eight million dollars.
Okay.
By two-thirds of vote. So if it passes, if it passes, then we have to notify both select boards within two days and that is part of the regional agreement, that it plans to assess each community its apportionment of, of the debt. The, each community then has sixty days to make a decision and has two options. One option is to bring the vote to incur debt to the town meetings, to the voters, or to take no action. And if it takes no action, doesn't bring it to a town meeting, on the sixty-first day, the regional school committee can incur that debt and move forward with the project. The reason why we're bringing this to the March fifteenth school committee meeting is to align it with the town meeting dates that are set forth in the town of Southborough and the town of Northborough. So the goal is, if the school committee approves this project by two-thirds, we send a letter to, the letters that we plan on assessing each of the communities' ex portion of this project. The next important date is conducting the town meeting. So we'll have a warrant article, and basically, the town voters will vote for the purpose of expressing disapproval of the amount of debt authorized by the regional school committee. So, and it's a majority of the vote, of the voters present, so it's not a two-thirds majority. And this is some of the nuance that exists because it's a regional entity. So they're not technically, the tech, the voters aren't technically approving the project. They're approving or disapproving the incurrence of debt. So at the March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three town meeting in Southborough, that's the April twenty-fourth, the intention is to have a warrant article with this language around incurring this debt. The communities will vote to disapprove or approve. And if they approve, then our intention is to incur the debt and move forward with the project. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, and Keith can also answer any questions that folks may have.
Does voting at March fifteenth give her enough time to get on the warrant?
Yes, so we, we have.
It's already been.
We have all the language. The towns have the language, so we should be in a good place.
And Keith, remind me.
Yes.
This will be ready for the fall first game.
Uh, not first game.
Second game.
Maybe third or fourth.
Our intention is.
Our intention, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, our intention is to, to begin this project.
After graduation.
In May.
Competing.
Attention. Yeah. Mid-May, so that we can have this project wrapped up for the fall season.
Right.
Princeel Bevan, Mr. Lavoy, and I are working on, trying to think about what, if this does move forward, May seventeenth. And all stars need to align for that to happen. What other alternatives can be made for admission?
And carnival?
Hmm?
And carnival.
And carnival.
Carnival should be fine.
It should, May nineteenth?
Should be.
Yeah?
You might not have to use the field.
You can still use like the backfields, right?
Yeah.
So I love that this is, so I remember, and I don't know if many of you guys remember Lori Borden bringing this up to South, like, she brought this up, I don't know. Um, I knew that, we need a, um, like, uh.
Yeah, thanks.
Sorry. My own, like, little world over here.
Do you like your chair?
I like my chair. Well, well, I like the fact that this is being brought up because Lori Borden brought this up back in two thousand, was it twelve, I guess? And not many people were for it, but, you know, we go to so many different games in other towns and, you know, like, I've done, I, I was a chaperone at the, you know, the walk that takes place.
Relay for life.
Yeah, and I walked, I think, for an hour and a half between, like, three and five. And that's a dangerous track to walk between three and five. I mean, the divots, I mean, it's not, it's not safe, I mean, so I, I love the fact that this is coming forward. I hope it gets approval for, you know, for funding. It's about time, actually.
Karen?
Yeah, I just wanna say that I'm, I'm, I'm for it too, and I, I recommend it, and the plan's great. I just, I'm a big, big proponent of having graduation outside. It's been lovely for the last couple of years. So if we could, I don't know, make that happen somewhere, somewhere on our facility, on the grass, outside, yeah. I just wanna make sure I, I actually didn't even think about that until recently when some parents started to communicate to me about that. And I was like, oh, yeah, right.
There is a lot of grass out there that we're not touching.
Right, and we're well aware that having the outdoor graduation really is a wonderful experience. And we're happy to, we're gonna do our best to provide that.
We'll have Plan A.
I know.
Plan B.
For Friday, for Saturday.
In the pandemic, we planned about four different graduations, one every two weeks.
I got some diagrams of where.
So when is graduation, Sean? What's the date?
June fourth.
Fourth?
Fourth.
I, I, honestly, and I don't, I'm not on video.
Yeah, you are. You're live, actually.
I think that, again, there are a lot of, a lot of components that would need to, you know, after, if the voters approve of this project, there are a lot of things that would have to come in place for it to start earlier than probably graduation, so.
I don't know that much about the demolition process, but I know there are a lot of parts to this whole project. And one would imagine we could maybe start on parts of, parts of the facility that, you know, are not the football field to start. I don't know. So we're open, we're, we're really aware that, that this is the preference of seniors and their families. And that would be my preference too, and we'll do our best.
Not to move things around, but it is nine forty-five.
Old business?
No old business, no policy development at this time. We had the recommendation and moved that piece of policy forward. Any public comment left?
Thanks for waiting.
Thank you for waiting. Please tell us who you are and where you live.
Yeah, please, yes.
Hi, guys. Nice to meet some of you. I think I know some of you already. One of the members of SAC, Amelia, one of the other members, just had to leave a little bit ago, but she wanted me to tell you all how thankful she is for all the support. She's the founder and leader of the Mental Health Advocacy Club that's new to Algonquin. And she is really proud of everything that's coming out of it, especially Mr. Bevan and Ms. Duggan, who have been very helpful with the entire process. There's another issue also that she wanted to talk about, which was the menstrual products briefly. We, I don't know if all of you were told already, but we got dispensers in the all-gender bathrooms for them, which we're very happy about. And as Ben said earlier, we're definitely getting further into the process of creating long-term goals for it. And then finally, another issue that I think is a concern recently is the past two days. And earlier this year, there've been some really last-minute bus cancellations for students. And I know that, like, you can't always predict what's gonna happen. You can't always know if a bus isn't gonna show up. But what really sucks for many is that they're told at the beginning of the last period of the day. So you're left with about forty minutes to figure out another ride home or find someone else to watch your younger siblings at home, because if your parents are working, it's a little harder. So I just know it's been a concern, and I'm hoping that there's some kind of solution that can be found in the long term to really support all students in that need. So thank you.
Very much. Communications was, we, we did receive that email. That was sent to all meeting members. Approval of bills and payrolls, agenda items for next month, we have world languages, warrant items, possibly a technology update.
Yep.
Okay. And, no, next month, maybe the month after, E S Y update. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. So at this point, we need to adjourn to, or motion to move to executive session with out returning to open session. Did I say that right, Chris?
Um, yes, yes, of course.
Did you motion that?
Um, I will motion that, meaning to do that for the purposes of conducting collective bargaining with Arda.
There's a motion by Chris.
Second.
Karen, second. All in favor? Uh, we're moved to executive session. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
You get the roll call though.
Karen?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Kathy? John?
Yes.
Kathy, yes, that was a yes.
I saw it too.